You're off.
Test one, two, test one, two.
He'll turn it on when Hillary calls me.
Ready, Ron? No? Tell me when.
All right, good evening, everyone. We're going to go ahead and get this meeting started. And this evening, we have our our Cub Scout Pack 20, who's going to do the color guard, and they're also going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So we'll go ahead and begin with that. Oh, we do roll call? Who's doing that this evening?
I'm doing that. I'm here.
Hi, Sue. Roll call real quick, guys, and then we'll get started.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Pro Tim LaBarre.
Present.
Councilmember Alfieri, I believe she's absent. Her case.
Here.
Councilmember Nakai.
Yeah.
Councilmember Neil.
Your.
Councilmember Zunlawaga.
Present.
Thank you.
Great. Okay, guys, we'll get started.
Color guard attention. Audience, please rise. Please put your right hand over your heart. Color guard forward march. Color guard hold. Color guard cross the colors. Please recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Color guard, post the flag of the United States of America. Color guard, post the flag of Colorado. Color guard, regroup. Color guard, retreat. Color guard, hold. Color guard, audience, please receive it.
Excellent job. Thank you very much.
Awesome, awesome, awesome. America, we love you. And this is why.
It would be epic if we had them every time. I would love it. All right, moving on to ceremonies, presentations, and appointments, we have beginning, we're going to have a thank you from the Salute to Veterans Rally organizers, and the presenter is Ray McPeak.
Mayor, councilmembers, would you like to start off with a quick video, please? Yes, it should be.
Nothing is quick with us when it's technical.
Ray, you can lift your mic up, too. I know it was a hard act to follow, wasn't it? Yeah.
Every summer, every summer, in the spectacular high country of the Rocky Mountains, United States military veterans and patriotic Americans make the journey to beautiful Teller County, Colorado, to pay tribute to true heroes of our great nation. For more than three decades, the Salute to American Veterans Rally has been recognized as the largest gathering of veterans and patriots in the western United States. Highlighted by the annual POW MIA recognition ride, the Salute to American Veterans Rally is attended and supported by thousands each year. People of all ages and from all walks of life have traveled from every state in the Union and from overseas to experience one of the most heartfelt and patriotic events in the world. Honor, respect.
Courage, tenacity, duty to God and country. These are all the characteristics that make Americans great, and these are the things that are shared and celebrated at the Salute to American Veterans Rally. The rally provides a venue to bring attendees together for a wonderful experience of camaraderie, patriotism, and shared experiences, providing strength and healing to many of our beloved veterans. Civilians who attend are given the opportunity to show their love and respect to those who have made our most precious gift of freedom a reality. Many charities and racing activities take place during the rally. Thousands of dollars are donated each year to local veterans and veterans organizations as a result. Attendees enjoy live music, beer gardens, vendor shows, ceremonies, guest speakers, and other memorable and fun experiences. The rally is very family-friendly and provides a beautiful venue for children to learn about the United States, our history, and the veterans who have played a part. The Vietnam Memorial Traveling Wall is typically a part of the rally, and both young and old can benefit from experiencing this spectacular historical display. To find out more about the Salute to American Veterans Rally, visit our website at theveteransrally.org. We hope to see you and your friends this August at the upcoming Salute to American Veterans Rally. God bless you, your families, our American veterans, and God bless America.
So with that video, we'd also like to give a framed, basically, certificate, presenting our thanks to the city of Woodland Park for their support of 2021, and also hoping for a good 2022 with Woodland Park with the Salute to American Veterans Rally.
Thank you, Ray. That's a great video clip. To catch the flyovers over Woodland Park was great.
Thank you very much, Ray. All right, I'm used to Suzanne being here, and I like to look at her for cues and things, and I can't see her, and so. So we're going to move on. There you are. So we're moving on to B, and we have the presentation regarding NVIDA, and it was formerly AMBLACAB, and there are services that are offered in Woodland Park. I have some personal experience with the services, and they reached out and asked if they could do a presentation to council. I think that they're an important service in the community, so I did want them to come in and share what they do for the community so that more people were aware of it. So. Good evening.
Hi.
Suzanne? Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers, for having me. My name is Leslie Patterson, and I am the healthcare mobility manager for NVIDA. We do healthcare services and also transportation. So we asked to come up and speak with the council on the public services. We've been up in Colorado, well, we've been in Colorado for 50 years, and we've been up in Teller County since 2020. So we launched a transportation program during COVID, which wasn't the easiest thing to do, but the community was really resistant, so.
Ma'am, can I ask you to speak into the mic?
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I know, it's nice to, yeah. And it's nice to speak to the audience, but then the online audience can't hear, so.
Can I have a little voice? So we've been around for 50 years. We launched in Teller in September 2020, and we've done over 700 rides in Teller since we launched. Excellent. So the hours, we have typically hours Monday through Friday from 5:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., but we also do specialties. So we have transported in the past, like, we've got a couple dialysis patients that have to go down the hill, and if they have an appointment early, we can adjust our hours depending on our riders. We just ask that the people give us a heads up. We've also taken clients to Denver for specialty appointments, and we ask in that case that they give us, you know, quite a bit of lead time because we have to arrange driver schedules. We service Teller, El Paso County. We do Eastern El Paso County, and we also do Park County mileage reimbursement. So in that case, if you have a family member who needs to get you to an appointment, then we pay for the transport or pay for the gas to get there. Like I said, we need advance notice, especially during COVID. It just gives our schedulers more time. So if you have an appointment that you know, we ask that you give us a call and let us know when the appointment is. If it is one of the specialty appointments that's outside of Teller, we try to give us a window as much as you can. Or you can schedule the appointment, call us, ask us when we have availability, and then schedule the appointment. Sometimes the doctor's offices will work with that. And I just put a quote in here. It's from one of the clients that uses our services up here. It says, "Thank you for providing me rides to my doctor's appointments. You gave me the ability to go places neither, either, don't I, places I either don't normally go to, and in one case, take me to medical procedures where I could not drive myself from. Thanks for giving me some independence and lots of peace of mind." We work in collaboration with Teller Senior Coalition. They do the 60 and older, and so we try to partner with them. If they've got, you know, too many people on their buses, then we try to pick up some and vice versa. We refer over to them also. Excellent. Then these are the types of rides that we do are to dialysis, medical, dental, behavioral, and substance use appointments, hospital transports. We do COVID transport, so if somebody is COVID positive, we do provide those services. Shopping pharmacy, what, going to the theater, kids need to be picked up from school. We can do school transports as long as it's not like a Monday through Friday where we step into the space of bus transports. So we don't have a license to do that kind, but if a student is going to one of the schools and has a mental health appointment or has a physical therapy appointment, we can do those. And then rides upon request is what I talked about. If there's a specialty and you're like, I'm not sure if you're able to do that, you give me a call. I check with the system, and we get that set up for you. So if you do are interested in getting information about rides, you can call our number, 719-633-4677. Linda has bookmarked. She's one of our drivers for us, and she was nice enough to come out tonight. So thank you, Linda. She's a super, super sweet woman and loves to get to know the community. So it's been really nice to be accepted up here, and we hope that we can continue. We're hiring another driver, and we'll be bringing up another vehicle. Any questions?
Counsel, sure.
Yeah, I have one. So are you state-funded or are you county-funded? How do you, how do you operate?
Good question. Most of it is grants. So we went through the plan that was done, I think it was in 2016, and transportation was identified as one of the barriers that you had up here in Colorado, in Teller County. And so as we were writing, it's called the FTA, Federal Transit Association. We wrote an FTA grant to help fund, to be able to provide services up here. And since then, we've gotten three more grants so that we can sustain it. Because one of the things when I was talking with Ted Borden, who, you know, runs Aspen Mine Center, he had said, you know, one of the things that we get really concerned about when an organization comes in and provides great services, and then funding runs out and they go away. So we are, you know, we've got now another grant that will take us into December 2022. And in the meantime, then we'll just, you know, write another one so that we can continue the services. And we're also starting a new service. We work with Ted Schweitzer, who is the Director of Transit in Cripple Creek. And we're going to be running another route from Cripple Creek to the public library, and then we'll pick up from the public library and take people down the hill if they need, if they have services down the hill that they need, or, or within Teller County.
So, so those grants, sorry to ask this. So those grants are federal grants then that you're tapping into?
We have federal, state, and local.
Okay.
All of them.
And that's done through, through which part of, through which branch is it for the, through federal transportation or CDOT or?
Yeah, so some of it's CDOT, some of it's, and now with the, with the new bill that passed, there's a lot of transit dollars that were in the infrastructure bill, so we'll be applying for those also.
All right.
And rural, rural transit has a, it's fair, I shouldn't say it's easy, but there's a lot of money out there for rural transit because we recognize, right? We've got people who are living in places that don't have access, especially to medical and dental and all those types of appointments. So that's one of the reasons why we went after it, to try and bring access to people who are living.
Do. Great. Yeah, so I just, I know PPACG does a lot of work, and I wonder whether you're working with them or not. You are?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, can I get one of your cards when you, or your flyers or whatever? Thanks.
Counsel, anything further? Thank you. Well, I just want to thank you for being willing to come and give a presentation. I think that your service is really important to the community, and especially because I hope that people recognize it isn't just for 60 and over, that it's for any age and anyone who needs help with transportation because it's a big deal, especially for parents who have to work full-time. So, and if they have to get their children down to the springs or, you know, to any kind of appointment, they, it's good that they know they have that help, so. And I'm glad it's here, so thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right, very good. Next on the agenda, we have item 3C, and it's a thank you to the Greater Woodland Park Chamber of Commerce and President Debbie Miller for all of their hard work and dissemination of information during the COVID-19 pandemic. And I had asked for this to be put on the agenda. I did not have any big, long speech, anything written. I just want to say thank you because you were an enormous help to the community, especially with all of the emails and information that you provided during COVID, and giving the businesses where they can go, who they could call, where they could reach out to for the loans, and education that they needed to try to stay afloat, and I really appreciated it very much, and I know that the rest of council did as well. So they agreed to have it on the agenda, and we just wanted to say thank you very much to Ms. Miller and to the entire chamber. If you guys would like to just come up to the podium and say a few words, you're welcome to. And I also have mayor's pens for you.
Mayor Pro Tim, you know I've been working to get that mayor's. On behalf of the chamber, I have some of my board members here with me tonight, Steve and Jim, and those are the two, and of course, my husband, who didn't bat an eye that I was working 20 hours a day during COVID, and that's one thing they didn't teach us in school. How do you deal with a pandemic? And so it was kind of learned trial by fire. We did Takeout Tuesdays, listed all the restaurants that were doing that, we're safe, we're open for business. We can do the alphabet soup of the PPP, EIDL, and it just goes on. And so looking for whatever we could find to sustain our businesses here in Teller County and in Woodland Park, that was our mission. I wish I could say that it's over, and unfortunately, we're still struggling with that. We're still finding dollars out there for disenfranchised businesses. We've sent information out, and so Mayor Pro Tim LaBarre, thank you very, very much. It's nice to be recognized for doing this.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you, Debbie. All right, good job. We are now on to 3D, and 3D is also going to be connected to item 10A. So once we have the presentation, I'd like to go ahead and do the resolution for 10A all combined so that those who present can be here for it instead of having to wait all evening for it to happen, so. I don't know on the packet, but I know on our agenda, it's on page two.
It's at the end of your packet. It's in the, the actual new business section of your packet.
149 pages, Susan.
I'll tell you, I can find what page it is. Give me one second.
I guess we had to search for it, right?
So we're going to do. Thank you.
Good, that's good.
I hope we don't get billed for that.
She's here, we get paid for it.
So item D is going to be the presentation of the 2030 Envision Woodland Park Comprehensive Plan, and I believe that Jennifer Gardner is going, is here to present. And we're going to go ahead and let her come up, and I, or is, is it you, Sally?
I'll introduce Jennifer and.
Excellent. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much for the honor to present the 2030 Envision Woodland Park Comprehensive Plan. This has been in the works for over a year, two years, in fact, when we selected our consultant, Logan Simpson. And I'm very proud to live in a community that takes smart and responsible planning seriously. And, you know, integrating land use, water, public safety, multimodal transportation, parks and recreation, healthy lifestyles is really important for us to look into the future and be able to have a roadmap forward for the next 10 years. We had over 70 people who dedicated themselves to various chapters in this comprehensive plan, and also many hundreds of people who took surveys and worked with our community to give us feedback as to the direction we'd like to go in the next decade. So with that, I'd like to introduce to you our two consultants from Logan Simpson, Jennifer Gardner and Christie Bruce, who put a lot of sweat into this plan, along with many, many residents and citizens in our community. So I'm very thankful to Logan Simpson, the citizens, the Planning Commission, the staff, and the City Council for supporting us through this very important, long-range planning effort. So with that, Jennifer, you can take it away.
Great, thank you, Sally. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. We have a short presentation for you today. I'll, I'll keep it brief because you have a lot on your agenda here tonight, so. As Sally said, this is quite an achievement. We commend you all for taking on this, this project of the comprehensive plan, and we're very excited to be able to be with you on this journey. It's, it's been a really, a really fun project to work on, so. Tonight, we're just going to go briefly over the, the process by which the project was completed, a little touch on some public engagement, vision statements, and then what's in the comprehensive plan. So as Sally mentioned, the project really started a couple of years ago with the contracting negotiation, but we kicked off the, the project in earnest in February of 2021 with some, excuse me, some stakeholder interviews, a plan audit, and existing conditions. We always look at the trends and existing conditions and build off of that with our goals and policies. We moved into phase two in April and May with a community kickoff event. We started our subcommittee meetings and preliminary land use plan development. Moving on into June and through August, we continued to work with those subcommittees to develop the goals, objectives, and actions, and finalize the plan details. And then here we are in, in November with a final plan adoption. We are working on a code update in tandem with the project at the moment, so that will be coming before you at some point here towards the end of the year. The roles of different groups in the process, excuse me. We have the public here at the top of this chart to show that they were integrated throughout the process, primarily by way of the subcommittees. We had, as Sally mentioned, I think, 80 different members of the community at one point on this, and the different subcommittees. It was a very cyclical project where we would work on some background information, bring that to the subcommittee. They could workshop their portion of, of the, of the plan and kind of work in a cyclical fashion between them and the public, taking their information back out to the public at several different touchpoints. So how that in public engagement looks, we did one-on-one stakeholder interviews at the beginning of the project, met with 27 people throughout the, throughout the project. It just, it didn't just happen over a couple of weeks. Christie kept taking on additional stakeholder meetings throughout the first several months of the project, and we really value that feedback. We had five online questionnaires, a town hall, high school civic class, met with a group of seniors at the senior center. We had a booth at the old-fashioned Fourth of July celebration, and as I mentioned before, our eight subcommittees. The subcommittees at our last meeting, we asked them to add up how many hours they, they thought they had donated to the project, and we had an accumulation of over 800 hours from community members, and that is, that is no small task. So we really commend and thank those subcommittee members from the bottom of our hearts. That's really what shaped this plan, so. Breakdown of the different questionnaires that we did. Our first questionnaire was the greatest needs, or 352 responses. That was just to start to gauge the greatest needs for the community. Then we broke it down into four different kind of topic-specific questionnaires, one on land use and housing, which had 243 responses, one on parks, trails, and open space, which had 164 responses, one on economy, history, and tourism, which had 118 responses. And our last questionnaire was on transportation, public safety, and utilities with 129 responses. Now, many of these responses were the same, you know, repeat people who took, took each of these surveys or questionnaires, and many of them were unique responses as well. And what we heard from these questionnaires, what people loved about Woodland Park is the mountain landscapes, small-town feel, community character, outdoor recreation, the people, the climate, convenient location. So these are, these are themes that we tried to draw through the entire plan to, to highlight. We had asked at, at one point, what should be improved in Woodland Park? Traffic management came up again and again and again in tandem with that reliever route, so I think the message is pretty clear. Walkable, wanting to be a more walkable community, more indoor/outdoor recreation. Our meetings with the high school civic class was really informative on what the, the teen population would like to see for recreation opportunities. So all, all great information. Our subcommittees were made up of a wide range of representatives, regional representation and city representation from Rampart Range Library District to the Pike's Peak Regional Hospital, Chamber of Commerce, transportation engineers, bankers, ranchers, staff members, teachers, students. It was, it was really a, a great mix of different backgrounds and specialties. So we built the plan off of the city's strategic vision, vision and mission that, that starts to set the foundation for the, the vision statements in each of the plan elements. So each plan element, there are. So each plan element, there are 12 of them, has its own vision statement, which gets a little bit more into detail on land use and growth, the finances, sustainability, and so on, matching each of those element titles. And what's in the plan, there's an executive summary upfront, which talks about the key topics for each of those 12 themes, just kind of summarizes it into a quick, a quick informative chapter or page where if you wanted to at least understand the basic concepts of what's in the comprehensive plan, you could click to this page and and look through and see kind of the basic concepts of what what the goals and policies are driving towards. There's a Woodland Park history, just to highlight, you know, the beginnings of Woodland Park and how how it's developed over time. The comprehensive plan themes, there's 12 of them, as I mentioned before, and they were organized into three different planned components. We did this because as we started to develop the different themes, we we realized there's and there always is with comprehensive plans. There's cross pollination, so to speak, between them. So there might be some goals and policies in housing that relate to land use that also relates to community character. So this was one way to kind of compartmentalize those components and and speak to the different pieces that kind of work together for the built environment, the socioeconomic environment and the natural environment. And then in each of those chapters, there's the 12 chapters, one for each element. There's a vision statement in each chapter, a background or existing condition section. There's 28 goals throughout the goals and policies throughout the different chapters, 77 objectives and 297 actions. Existing conditions, we, like I said, each each chapter includes this section on the background. So you have for land use, housing and growth, just some key metrics on housing types, housing costs, the existing land uses. And one way that this can be used is in tandem with the actions as as the plan grows, lives and grows. Over time, you can come back to this and say, you know, one of our goals was to get a broader variety of housing types. You know, currently you're primarily detached housing. So maybe in five years you recheck this and say, okay, look, we have some other unit types that are starting to grow and balance out the housing variety. So that's just one way that existing conditions can really help support a plan and the actions as it lives and grows. Each of these sections, as I mentioned, this is kind of how the goals and objectives and actions are laid out. You have a goal at the top of each page. You go through an objective and then each objective has specific actions tied to it. The three mile plan is a state mandated portion of all comprehensive plans. It just shows a buffer three miles out from the boundary of of the city. And it's meant to indicate areas of coordinated planning areas. So that doesn't mean that the city intends to annex this whole area. It just means if any development were to happen out in that area from any other community, this is Woodland Park's three mile area of of coordinated planning. You can see Green Mountain Falls does fall within that coordinated planning area. They have their own three mile plan. And it's just a matter of the two communities communicating with each other on development, which has always been been a strong point. The last element of the plan is the future land use map. The primary areas of change were the areas highlighted here by an A, a B and a C. We just worked with the community to tighten up the land uses in these areas based on the available water taps and just making sure that there was the right land uses reflected. The the KRS PUD was just represented. We changed it to be represented accurately to what what is there now. It was a little bit out of date before. So and just the commercial and mixed use areas along the 67 and 24 corridors were just tightened up and and coordinated. Each of these future land use categories has a description and some imagery to support what what the vision might be for that particular land use category. And last but not least, if the reliever route were to go in, we've created a couple of illustrative sketches of what the Highway 24 corridor could look like in a more walkable pedestrian oriented design. So these two images at the end represented what that might look like as kind of an overall vision for the future. And that is all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your work on the on the studies. Great. You were flexible with us and moved with our requests. So thank you.
It's our pleasure.
Sally, did you have anything further you wanted to add?
We just look forward for your endorsement of this plan and start implement.
All right, council under 10A, it is to approve the resolution number 882, series 2021, to endorse envisioned 2030 Woodland Park Comprehensive Plan as requested by the Woodland Park Planning Commission. So council, could I get a motion? Oh, there is.
It may.
It may be heard. I don't have anyone signed up for it. Do we have any hands up on Zoom?
No ma'am.
Okay. Okay. I don't see anyone in the audience.
Then I'll make a motion to.
I just asked Dawn, don't you want to comment?
Then I'll make a motion to approve the resolution. Eighty two, as written.
I'll second.
Suzanne.
Okay, council, you may vote.
You you want to have any kind of discussion about it? I I just want to make a comment that I appreciate Sally. The language in this resolution where it says that envisioned Woodland Park 2030 Comprehensive Plan is an aspirational document and not regulatory, but provides guidance through the future development and growth of the community. You and I, and I know Councilman Neil also struggled with the languaging that we saw in the document. And I just want to really applaud you for working with us to make it clear that this is it's something we aspire to. It's not a mandate on the city. So well done.
Yeah, I'll second that Sally, because you and I have spoken for so long about this and getting it so that we recognize what the Colorado revised statute makes mandatory versus what we have made the comprehensive much more than what the the requirement of the state is. The language that you worked with the Planning Commission and the council to come up with, I really appreciate it. I was so hesitant on voting yes until you worked with us and got the precise language we wanted. It's going to be great to endorse it. So.
Well, thank you for that. And really kudos go to the Planning Commission.
Yes.
That spent many hours going through every chapter and just a great job by your volunteers in this community.
And and the eight subcommittees is too, it's, you know, they deserve a great applause for what they did. It was, it was a concentrated group. I would have liked to have seen many more in the community weigh in. But the ones who did just gave it their all and it was, it was, it was good to see.
So Mayor Protem, to recap, I have a motion on the table from Councilmember Nakai and a second from Councilmember Neil. And the voting is open.
Correct. Does everyone? Okay.
Let's make a deal music. Anybody got it down to down pat?
Interesting. I'm not seeing your voting, but I'm assuming.
Well, there it is. We can see.
Well, I put that in there. Why I can't see the voting, but motion pass five zero. Thank you.
Good, everybody.
All right.
Thank you.
It's a real pleasure living in a community who takes their planning seriously and that we want to create a community that everyone is proud of and enjoys living here. High quality of life. Thank you.
Thank you, Sally. All right, now we're going to move on to item three E and consider the appointment of Sean Marie Nielsen to the Planning Commission. And I believe that she's here today and Suzanne's the presenter.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. As council will recall, we had this item on the last council meeting's agenda. Ms. Nielsen was unable to attend, so we are revisiting this this evening. There are currently two vacancies on the Planning Commission. They have two separate terms. So one term expires on January 1st, 2024. And the other term that is available is expiring on January 1st, 2023. We received the application from Sean Marie Nielsen and as Mayor Protem LeBarre mentioned, she is in the audience this evening to answer any questions council may have.
Great. If you wouldn't mind just coming up to the podium and introducing yourself and why you're interested.
Hi, well, my name is Sean Marie Nielsen. I actually moved up here about four years ago and I kind of ran into a small situation where I ran into Sally, who's been very informative. She's been very helpful. And so when she recommended that they had a few openings up, I just, I kind of jumped at the chance. I thought, oh, that's great. I, when I got here, I wanted to evolve. I wanted to do a little bit more for the county that I live in. I actually do work for El Paso County still, but I wanted to be more involved more in living. And so it was just a great opportunity and and I jumped at it. So thank you for considering me.
Sure. Very good. Council questions, comments?
Well, I want to thank Dawn for some of the advice he gave to council to not have too many cups of coffee and do too much interviewing. So I never met with you and had a cup of coffee. So I'm going to do some of my interviewing questions that I would normally do. And I don't want to put you on the spot. I know this is even worse than sitting down and having a cup of coffee, believe me. But I haven't asked two very pressing questions in my mind for this very important thing. And I don't want to turn off any other citizens from ever volunteering either or applying. But would you mind just talking me through your philosophy on property rights? That's the first question. And then related to it is, how do you plan to implement your philosophy regarding zoning?
Okay, so part of where that came around was that I was noticing there were some discrepancies and I had questions that were concerning some of the covenants that we had. And I wanted to make sure the job that I do currently for El Paso County were all about rules and regulations and making sure that we're guiding within those. But a big part of that is also making sure that you don't alienate somebody or that somebody doesn't feel like they're not wanted or they don't have a say. With that being said, the years that I've had with that, I've learned very quickly how to kind of adapt and work with and and make sure that everybody's heard and everybody's equal, yet following the rules, the guidelines and the things that go along with that. A lot of what I've done personal, well, I guess in my career, I wanted to kind of overflow into my personal. So like I said, when we moved up here, I wanted to be a bigger part of where I live. You know, I like El Paso County. I've worked for them for 24 years. It's nothing wrong with them. I'm not saying that. I'm just saying that I really wanted to be a part of somewhere I'm living. And that's not an opportunity that I had there, but I'm very grateful for the opportunity here. So with that being said, part two of your question then, um, I'm all about rules and regulations and kind of following the book. But like I said, I also want to make sure that I'm open enough and I'm welcoming that in. And I certainly, you know, I really appreciate any opportunities to learn and and kind of expand on that and and to just kind of grow my knowledge.
I think that was a very informative response, but I want to kind of bore a little bit more into property rights. How kind of, what are your thoughts on property rights? How do you, you know, who has property rights? How do you adjudicate them in your your opinion?
Well, I mean, every person who has property obviously has a right. But you also have to be respectful of someone else's property rights. And I think it's a fine balance. And I think it's something that you kind of have to weigh. You know, does this property right outweigh someone else's right or needs? And, you know, which is the greater, which is the greater good for everyone? And that's something that I hope, you know, that I'll get to learn a little bit better and navigate more as I go along.
Okay. No, that's that's fine. Just trying to get inside your head a little bit. The Planning Commission has a lot of clout in the city and it's very, very important.
I got, yeah, I'm learning and I I'm telling you, I'm really excited. And I, I'm, you know, yeah, it's very exciting. Be considered. And I would have helped her volunteer even because. Anybody else?
Yes, hi. So I I married a rulemaker. I understand rulemakers. We live in a country that has some rules and guidelines and rights for the citizens. And when you drill it down to your community, something each of us are bound by is the Constitution of the United States. Have you read it? Then we're bound by the Constitution of Colorado. Have you read it? I love it. So then the whole issue of property rights comes down to life, liberty and pursuit of happiness. And so that fine line you talk about, because you've read those documents, that gives me a greater understanding that your rulemaking is would be tempered by your understanding of our founding documents. That be fair?
That would be fair. And I, and I know that Sally has given me some of the documents when I come and observe. And one of the first things I did is I looked at some of the CRSs so I have better understanding when I got here, what you were talking about, what you were observing, what we were doing. And I was like, okay, this is, this is in my alley. I can, I can do this.
Thank you. I don't have any more questions.
Okay, anybody else?
So when I spoke to you via the phone, I was really intrigued by your volunteer work. Could you just elaborate a little bit? Because I think it's important for the community.
Um, part, one of the things that I do is I am involved with also, well, with El Paso County, I'm their fraud prevention and investigation supervisor for that county. One of the things that I'm on is UPOC. It's the United Welfare Fraud Council. As part of that council member, I sit on the legislation board. So I'm part of putting legislations in for certain programs with Congress. Not gotten to sit in front of Congress yet. I will admit that's a little intimidating, but I enjoy helping make those rules and regulations for Congress. The Colorado Welfare Fraud Council is for Colorado. So I, you know, got to learn some of those rules and regulations. I also was president, past president, and I am also on the legislation board there. So I also get to make rules, sit in, kind of govern how people apply for assistance, how the assistance is given out and what are the needs and basic thoughts of those said counties. So with that, that's a lot of what I do as part of, you know, my years with El Paso County. Now personally, if you flip that, I also volunteer on my own personal time. I'm not part of a committee with homeless. I like going out. My husband and I, we, every Christmas, we do a Christmas in the park where we just go out and feed them. And we hand out gifts. I've done Toys for Tots. I've done Feed the Children through El Paso County and just I enjoy helping and enriching the community in any way I can. I also, the other part of what I do, um, we work in the preventative part of fraud. So we do a lot of education of clients and people and communities to make sure they understand the rules, the regulations and what's going on, what's needed. I believe it's, you know, if you know how to play the game, it's only fair if you know the rules. And I have, you know, so it's that fine line again, coming back to, you know, do you know the rule? Do you not know the rule? How do you know? Do you not know the rule? How do you know that? And so I believe education is a big part of it.
Very good. Counsel, anything further?
You forgot the Waldo Canyon Fire and the Manitou City Flooding and...
I, yeah, I wear many, many.
The Black Forest Fire.
I do. Thank you. I do wear many hats. I've helped with the Black Forest Fire. I've helped with the Waldo Canyon Fire. I've helped with the Manitou flooding and with security when they have a lot of hail. I work very closely with El Pomar and handing out money to the citizens to make sure that they can get over that temporary home until we can get some real, you know, disaster assistance relief in there. So that is the other thing that I have studied.
Yeah, her professional and volunteer experience is the reason why when she said, I just go look at the CRS. Not many people can say they live in Colorado, revise statutes and read them and then understand the rule. So it's unique.
I'll print them out, highlight them. Nina and I might be friends later.
Very good. Counsel, anything further?
Just which, have we been given recommendation of which of the two positions to fill?
The motion maker will do that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Person who makes the motion can choose the year. So if you want to be that motion maker.
I will make a motion to approve Sean Marie Nielsen to the Planning Commission and to fill the slot that is expiring soonest so that we give her opportunity to, to add to it.
2023.
No, no, not 1121. No, no, no.
23.
It's 24.
23.
Oh, 1123? So I guess before I make, finish that, let me just ask, I know there's a 24 one, but there's one that will be vacant, and then somebody will come and fill it. Because we're not going to vote anybody before then, right? So do it to 24, 24.
Good idea.
We're having trouble pointing people anyway, so the longer we can keep them, the better, right?
Well, I guess what I was trying to say is that once you're on board, you, we've reviewed you, we've interviewed you, and then it's just, what's the next? Do we, you come before us again?
When her term is out.
When your term's up, okay. Yeah, so make it as long, the longer of the two.
It'll be 2024. I'll second.
I see. So I, I have the appointment of Sean Marie Nielsen to the Planning Commission for the term expiring January 1st, 2024. Counsel, you may vote.
You just want to do it verbally if you're not getting our things.
Let's try again. I think Grace figured it out. She did. It's working.
Good job, Grace. I'll just give you a quick word of advice while we're waiting.
Okay.
Just remember, no one's rights trump anyone else's. All of our rights are equal. Just something to chew on.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Oh, thank you. Suzanne has our results.
There's a little booger in there that's voting for me. But that is how I would have cast my vote. So for the record, thank you.
I have to ask, you still have to ask Grace what's going on. We're having, we are having difficulty voting. But is that correct, everyone voting in the affirmative?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries five seats. Thank you very much.
Very good. Thank you for volunteering. We do appreciate it. Sean, I would like to, Sean, I would like to thank you for everything that you do. It's a pleasure to know you.
Sally's excited. All right, very good. And we just have three F left under presentations, and it will be the proclamation declaring Saturday, November 27th, 2021, a Shop Small Saturday. And I believe Gail Wingard is here to present. And Gail, after you present, I'll read the proclamation for you.
Good evening, counsel.
Good evening.
Mayor Protem, staff, and Woodland Park citizens. I am Gail Wingard. I'm the program manager for Woodland Park Main Street. And we are going to be celebrating Shop Small Saturday again on November 27th. And for those of you that may not know what that is, Shop Small Saturday is a promotion that American Express started many years ago to help promote the small businesses in our nation. And so Woodland Park Main Street and the Chamber have worked together the past four years to create a promotion. And so on the 27th, we will be having a welcome station downtown. And these are the bags that we will be giving away this year. And we, these are actually given to us by American Express. And we have them filled with about 20 coupons from different participating merchants. So this year, however, we are going to be at Joni's parking lot. So we've moved our tent down the street a little bit, but we will start at 9:30 in the morning. And so these are free. So the first, I don't, it depends on how many bags we finally get. Right now, we have 36, but we're hoping to get at least 50 more. But we will be giving these away, and we'll be there for 9:30 until we give them all away. So before you get out to shop local and support local and love our locals, come by the, the welcome station at Joni's and get a free shopping bag. So thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Thanks, dear. Awesome.
Any questions or comments before I read the proclamation? I see wheels.
Do you have all the volunteers you need?
Yes.
Okay.
I did. Hallelujah.
Good question.
Okay, very good. So Small Business Saturday, November 27th, 2021. Whereas the city of Woodland Park, Colorado celebrates its local small businesses and the contribution they make to our economy and community. And whereas the citizens of the Woodland Park area support their local businesses and recognize that such local businesses create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our neighborhoods. And whereas the city of Woodland Park, Colorado joins with other localities in Colorado and across the nation in recognizing the importance of small business. Now therefore, I, Hillary LeBar, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor Protem of the city of Woodland Park, in recognition of this event, do hereby proclaim November 27th, 2021 as Shop Small Business Saturday. And all residents of the Woodland Park region are encouraged to shop at your local small business in Woodland Park, Colorado, to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. And get there at 9:30 at Joni's Deli's parking lot to get those coupons before you start shopping. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Okay, moving on. Additions, deletions, or corrections to agenda? We have none. Off to consent calendar, we have 5A, approval of October 21st, 2021. And then that was tabled. And then we also have the November 4th, 2021 Regular City Council Meeting Minutes. Counsel, are you all familiar with them and comfortable with them?
Alex, one question.
Sure.
Sorry, Michael, I didn't have a chance to ask you earlier. On the register of expenses, there's one item. It's Midwest Card and ID Solutions Salamander Items From a COVID Grant. It's about $3,500. Can you tell us what that is?
And that's under B for approval of?
Oh, we're not doing them together?
We can, we can. Yeah. I know. I'm always happy to do them together. Sometimes you guys want them parted. So, but just for the record, it's under B.
Okay.
So I believe this is a piece of our ID card system here at this building. It is to have it integrate with our other software systems. It was part of the security upgrade we did last year or even early this year. Fortunately, I don't have IT workplace present here today. So it has to do with building security for this. This was an add-on piece for software integration and some additional hardware pieces, I believe.
Makes sense.
Yeah, some, some members are ID matched.
Okay.
I don't know why it's called that.
That's all.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anything further? All right. Well, counsel, if you're comfortable doing item A, which is the approval of the minutes, and item B, approval of the statement of expenditures, together, we can do that.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented.
I'll second.
Okay, counsel, let's try this again. You may, you may vote.
Yeah.
Awesome.
Thank you, counsel. Motion passed unanimously. I don't know why it's not coming up on the screen now, but it did pass unanimously.
We have it.
Okay. There you go. Thank you.
Now that just showed for A, are you doing it for A and B?
Yes, I'm combining it in the minute.
It's for both. Excellent. Just thought I'd check.
Thank you.
Okay. That's out of the way, and we're moving on to six, which is public comment on items not on the agenda. I am aware of one person who has signed up. Do we have any hands up on Zoom for that?
We do not. I have one sign up too. Hopefully it's the same person. Is it Rosemary Myers?
It is. Yes.
Perfect.
Okay. And she's coming up to the podium now.
I am. Hello, thank you. I'm Rosemary Myers.
Lisa Page.
And we're here because of recent articles that have been in the Courier and also rumors or discussions around town around Airbnb regulations. I myself have a strong regulatory background as well, and I've read the, I get the highlighter out too. I've recently retired as Director of Quality and Patient Safety Officer for Penrose St. Francis Hospital. And we've been, I have been members of the community since 2016 up here. And we own two homes here. One's an Airbnb, the other one, the main home is a historic home. We bought the Maytag home, and we consider it an honor to be stewards of that and this community.
Your fellow standard poodle owners. I've seen them.
We also feel it's our responsibility to be good neighbors and to be responsible to our neighbors as we offer places for tourists to stay and for the veterans when they come up for the rallies and things for the community. We do believe regulation is a good discussion to have. We would like to suggest or recommend and ask that a subcommittee be formed to do research and look at what the communities that are like Woodland Park, not so much Denver and Colorado Springs, since they have very restrictive regulations, but they also have hotels. So I think it would be beneficial for the community for a group to come together. Many Airbnb owners we've spoken to have no idea that this is even a topic for discussion. And I think there's, needs to be responsibility kind of tabled from owners and any community members alike so that we can bring a fair recommendation to the planning committee.
And businesses as well, because it impacts businesses as well.
So that's, that's why we're addressing tonight. And, you know, we're, we're pleased to know that this is a discussion happening in the community. And, you know, we do know the stories of parties that've gone bad, and we do believe those owners should be held accountable. But thank you for taking time to hear us, and hopefully you'll consider the requests.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Normally, with public comment, we don't do back and forth with counsel in public. But I will let you know that Councilmember Nakai and I did just attend a state meeting where they were talking about possible legislation imposing triple taxation on, on Airbnbs. It did not pass. So that is not a concern of ours at the moment. And I know that Sally, our planning director, and I know that our city manager, Michael, have been looking at this issue. I know they have employees doing research on it. And I know at some point, we've all talked about having, at the very least, a work session to get community feedback and go from there. I don't know how soon it will happen, but all of us are aware of it. And we do want to work with the community for it. So thank you.
Have a conversation.
Yeah.
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 Mayor Protem, I had heard that the Planning Commission was even going to have some discussions on that. Did I get a bad rumor? Sally, do you happen to know if the Planning Commission is having any kind of discussions on it?
Michael. So, and Sally can correct me if I'm wrong. I, I think the idea is for staff to prep some initial materials and research, problem statement, potential solutions, and some other items, and then have a joint work session would be our preference between you all and the Commission.
And the community as well, too.
Yeah, I was, I was going to say, I think your suggestion is fabulous. I do. And I think it should happen upfront rather than at the tail end. So, I mean, I, I don't know how that all comes together, but I think that citizens in the community, concerned citizens, would be great to work with you as you're gathering materials. I mean, I think that would be such a positive, rather than us all think we've got the answers and then the, those in the community kind of have to follow in tail of it.
Are, we both live here and we were kind of both sides at this point. So as far as getting opinions, I see, I live here, so I get the, that side of it, and I have the Airbnb, so I actually have that up too. So we're in a little bit different position than somebody that's an outsider.
If you guys wouldn't mind coming up to the microphone, just because our online audience can't hear you.
So, thank you.
It's okay.
We also feel that we personally are responsible to our neighbors. We have conversations with our neighbors. They have our contact information. So if there's ever any concern about a guest, you know, I don't mind being called at 2:00 in the morning to deal with something that hasn't happened. But they know that we're available, we're responsive. We screen very carefully. We have, you know, we watch out for, you know, each other. And we feel that's an important part of operating any business in Woodland Park and being responsible and part of the community. And we both have our businesses here in downtown area, very close to here. So, you know, we very much like to be part of the research. And, you know, like we said, we welcome the conversation, and there is need for some structure, regulation around that, especially when you've heard stories of unresponsive or irresponsible owners.
Sure. So maybe our department heads can put their heads together and come up with something they'd like to offer us for an agenda that we can announce to the public.
Yeah, I just want to add, just for your own knowledge, that we, the city manager has a, every other week when we don't have a city council, he meets with the council members two at a time so we don't violate anything. But one of the things, and you even said it just a moment ago, defining the problem. We got a lot of rumors flying around with solutions, but I'm not sure we've really got a good handle on the problem because property rights are pretty, which is understood in the Constitution. So, Michael, what you're doing with your staff, let's define some, define the problem or problems and then seek for solutions. Exactly.
Talk about it from both angles. We do have some great input. Both sides of it. We love to be on the front end of it. I think it would be much more beneficial than on the back end, you know, trying to go, no, 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 you don't understand. It's the front end that you really need the input on. And I've also talked to some of the business owners, because the tourism, their release, it all goes kind of hand in hand with our businesses. So we don't want to cut our nose off to spite our face with the taxes that we pay. I pay an enormous amount of tax to the city of Woodland Park for my rentals. The businesses do as well. Without the Airbnbs, you have less tourism, which affects the businesses, which affects your tax. It all kind of goes together. So just saying, oh, somebody had a party and ran into a kitchen.
There also has to be some accountability for all business owners. And Airbnb owners are part of that as well. So we do think, you know, it is a discussion that needs to be had and some definitions around what the problems are and how to draft solutions and the best recommendations.
It kind of, it kind of boils down to balance, and, and I think that's really the focus that I've, that we've had conversations about, not as a group, but with our city manager, Rusty and I meet with him every other week on a, on a call to talk about things like this and things that are going on in the community, and, and we did have this conversation, and, and a striking of balance is, is really important, and I welcome your comments and your input. And I'm sure that we can accommodate some, something similar to that. So, we're not doing anything, but we are getting some, getting information defining the problem specifically, so that we can have a good conversation, not just amongst ourselves, but with you all as well, and, and the whole community. There's two sides on everything, so that's absolutely very important, and we hear you. Thank you.
So ladies, I would suggest that you pass contact information along to either our director, Sally Riley, or city manager, Michael Lawson, and they can keep you in the loop, and then, very good, and then they'll, eventually we'll get in some loop, and then we'll all loop together, so. Sure, absolutely.
And if I may, you know, we're, we as staff are certainly happy to reach out to Ms. Myers and Ms. Page here in the next few weeks, and to hear your initial thoughts. We, we're very, very early in our research process. We are talking to handfuls of folks as they come up, as we try and put together kind of a more coherent approach to finding the problem, proposing solutions, because there's many, many, many ways to go about this conversation. And so we, we'd be happy to talk to you about that here very soon before the process gets too much further. Yeah.
Thank you for bringing that topic up. We appreciate it. Right, any hands on Zoom, Suzanne?
No, ma'am, thank you.
Okay, seeing none in the audience, we are going to move on. I have seven unfinished business, which is none, and next we are on ordinances on initial postings, where I will continuously forget that there is also public comment. So. So we're on eight A to consider on initial posting ordinance number fourteen oh seven, and Erin is the presenter for that.
All right, good evening.
Good evening.
Tonight, tonight we have the initial posting and setting of the public hearing for the two thousand twenty-two budget appropriation ordinances. We have fourteen oh seven, which is for the general fund, and we have fourteen oh eight, which is for all other funds. Adopting the two ordinance following the public hearing on December second, two thousand twenty-one will appropriate the sums of money that will allow for the expenditure of revenues in each fund in the amount and for the purpose set forth in the ordinances. And the budget document with all the line item detail has been provided in previous session.
Counsel, do you have any questions or comments about this, the general fund?
Yes, I do.
I always look right at you.
We know you always want to come.
All right, so let's.
Yeah, and remember, this is initial posting.
I understand. So, in the actual language of the ordinance, my first comment is, the last line of the second paragraph, it says, expend a portion of fund balance for capital outlays, acquisitions, and improvements. I think we've glaringly left out debt service. I don't see that allocated in here. So just, just sit with that one first. Then, as I looked, Erin, at your general fund, from what we, we have in the book and what you have put into this ordinance, I see some number discrepancies, so. It was in our book thirteen four something, and now it's thirteen eight thirteen. Oh, yeah, let me find it. Go to on each one here. Thirteen four thirty-six on page twenty-five of the books that we have. Thirteen four thirty-six nine twenty-nine, and we have now a general fund appropriation of thirteen eight thirteen eight fifty-six, so. Why are those numbers different?
One second for me.
One thing I remember is the last iteration of the document I have does not include the changes that we talked about last time, one of them being, remember, the clerk's budget was left out, and which includes the election and her salaries and things like that. There were a few things that we cited that needed updated. Michael, is that in?
Well, the, there, there were, and those, those have been included here. The clerk was, the, the figures are in the bottom line for the budget, but just the pay.
Oh, I see. Okay.
Wasn't the, it was in this.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, I misspoke. That's exactly what it was.
For councilmembers, the longest question. I don't know if Erin.
Erin's looking at that.
Well, it's to the tune of about seven.
I apologize. It's gonna take me a few minutes to pull the detail here.
Okay. Well, while you're doing that, I'll kind of queue up the next one. So back on the idea of of appropriating towards the debt service. I guess I'm not seeing where that. There was a hundred thousand from the council before us. There was five hundred thousand from last year, a million that we talked about for overage from last year, where we had, for this year, I'm sorry, we have about one point four surplus. So then where's the other four hundred surplus from this year being allocated?
So this, being that this is the twenty-two budget, you're not going to see the surplus from twenty-one appearing in the ordinance.
Okay, but we should see it being appropriated towards debt.
On page twenty-three.
Yeah.
Of your budget.
Physical budget?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
The designation of fund balance. There's one point eight five million dollars.
Yes, I see that.
That would be where it is.
Oh, so it's.
There's not, we don't spend anything. We designate fund balance to be used. In the amount.
I'm just trying to, very good, and I'm trying to allocate in my brain where the big numbers are.
Yeah.
That we have, we have this big overage. We have an increase of almost two, over one point seven five million dollars increase in revenues for this year. I mean, for proposed twenty twenty-two, and so in, just doing a mental math of where the, where the extra is going, and that we are allocating appropriately towards what we're talking about paying off some of the debt we have. So it's like, okay, we have an increased budget of almost one point seven million dollars, we, of revenues, and we're increasing our expenditures, but are we, are we also seeing where that overage funds are going? And that's what I'm, that's what I'm trying to pick up here.
Page twenty-three.
Twenty-three, I get that.
It's, I'm sorry.
So, again, this, this is appropriation, this ordinance, on page twenty-three, you'll see it show up in fund balance, and it's not, Erin could do a much better job explaining it, because she had to explain it to me. But that money going toward the debt service is not going to show up in the ordinance, because it's not a true corporation. Perhaps Councilmember Case can better articulate it than I can as well.
We won't spend anything, and so we don't have to appropriate for an expenditure. We designate the unused funds for a specific use. So we have on page twenty-three, it's not unreserved, and it's not unassigned, which is exactly as it's described. It's in capital debt service reserve.
So if I can understand what you're saying, so we have one, what we have thirteen million eight hundred and thirteen dollars and eighty-six cents is what our revenues are for twenty twenty-two.
Okay.
Are you saying that included in the, in the dispersments over the year of twenty twenty-two, one million eight hundred and fifty thousand, which isn't showing in the expenditures, is, is accounted for?
It is, but it's, it's an accumulation. Fund balance is the difference since the beginning of time for the city of Woodland Park. It is the accumulation of the revenues that have exceeded expenditures over time, and that is our fund balance, so. It is that difference accumulated over time that gives us our five point four million dollar fund balance in total, which is broken down into designations or reservations for specific uses or by, as prescribed by law. And that portion of that difference that we didn't spend over time is the one point eight five that we have restricted or reserved towards that future debt service payment. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
It's not an expense.
So it's not in the twenty-four percent, twenty-four point six three, that's the.
That's the unreserved.
That's just the unreserved. I think I'm good with that now.
You follow?
Thank you.
You so well. I hate to step on Erin's toes.
I was going.
No, I appreciate it. Thank you.
I was going to ask Erin if there was anything she wanted to clarify or add.
No, yeah, that, that's exactly right. We're not actually spending any money in two thousand twenty-two, so the money is just being put against fund balance. There is no expenditure represented.
And it won't show up in the ordinance, because the ordinance only appropriates for expenditure.
For the expenditures. Okay, so did you, so Erin back.
Michael wanted to add something.
Oh, go ahead.
Quickly on your first point.
Yeah.
You mentioned that debt service is not mentioned in that warehouse paragraph.
Yes.
And that's true, but it is mentioned, it is called out with the explicit number nine hundred and seventy-five thousand five hundred and thirty-eight dollars, a separate line item on the following page.
Yes.
Which is a general interest service on various funds or various debts, not this, not the larger one that we're setting aside.
That's the current period debt service.
Yeah, that, that's the principal interest for Memorial Park.
Memorial Park and the, and Whack, and, yeah.
So that is called out here, even if it's not in the warehouse.
Okay, then I'm good with that.
Okay, you guys ready for me?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, so, all right, I apologize. So in the, in the proposed budget that we, we prepared for you guys on October fifteenth, we had the total revenues as thirteen million eight one six three five six. And this one that's been updated, it's, it's thirteen eight one three eight five six, which is twenty-five hundred dollars difference. It's because in my original calculations, I had duplicated the line for public works fees, which is GL account one hundred zero 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 three four four one, which is twenty-five hundred dollars, and it was in there twice, so that's been corrected on, on this version.
Okay, and then the, going through those general fund, city manager changed four forty-nine two seventy-two. So it looks like it dropped fifteen thousand more or less, so is that Main Street and something else? There's another ten grand. I just wonder what was removed out of there.
Is that?
Was.
I think we moved that to interdepartmental. Fifteen, yes, I believe that is Main Street.
That's only about five.
I see is, is about fifteen thousand.
Yeah.
Yep. Exactly fifteen thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Is the difference between this and then the book for four forty-nine two seventy-two versus the four sixty-four two seventy-two.
Okay.
You'll find on page thirty-seven.
So that's good. Thank you for doing that. Planning and building is a difference of thirty-five hundred.
That would be the asbestos mitigation.
Okay, all right. Inter non-departmental is about seventy-five oh one.
That's IT services, right? That's civic engage.
Civic engagement. That's great, huh?
That, that's the website.
Website?
So, yeah, what, what we had, when we kind of blew up the assistant city manager GL, we moved it to different places for reordering. We had missed putting back in the annual subscription for the website. And so we had to add that back in, many against other savings we had, so that's what that was. We put, we centralized many of our software subscriptions into the inter slash non-departmental, depart, on departmental department.
Okay, good, thanks. Fleet maintenance dropped five thousand. Can you explain that?
That is, we, we understood, we actually debated what council's intentions were. My understanding was that you all wanted to remove the five thousand dollar maintenance adding public or fleet maintenance, because we were for semi-four vehicles, and so that's what that is. It was a five thousand dollar.
And I think.
Over last year.
Yeah.
Over, over last year.
So it's going to remain the same as last year.
Will remain static for, yes, for twenty-two.
And we, we had talked about liquidating six vehicles, and is that reflected in this? It's not reflected in this.
No.
All right. All right, we'll see that at the end of the year.
Assuming we get the new vehicles.
Yeah, 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 right, right.
And that, that'll be, you'll see that revenue.
Same assets.
Same assets, yeah.
Okay. And then my last question, our comment on this page is, and so we have an overage of revenues to expenditure of about five hundred and sixty-six thousand seven hundred and twenty-eight. Is that just in a contingency, or if we don't spend it, it goes back into the general fund? Is that kind of, what's, what's the?
I'll, I'll ask Erin to answer that.
Erin?
So because we're putting extra funds into the debt service reserve, we use some of the revenues there to, to increase the fund balance.
So are you allocating the debt service amount at two hundred and fifty thousand or five hundred thousand?
In twenty.
For twenty twenty-two.
It's three fifty. Is the.
For the, for the, right, well, you know, we set aside a million at the end of this year, and then into this budget, we're doing five hundred thousand.
It was three, three hundred fifty.
So you moved it up to three hundred and fifty from two hundred and fifty?
We proposed a two fifty, and then because of things that we found during, in between the proposed budget and where we are now, there were additional savings, and I throw in kind of the last minute, like, what, what would you like to do with this roughly hundred thousand dollars?
Right, so it's.
Okay with.
Okay. Good. So.
Robert, on page twenty-eight, under miscellaneous, total miscellaneous, there's a line item thirty-eight fifty-one sale of assets. They have budgeted five thousand dollars for sale of assets revenue, just so you know.
Yeah. And you're thinking that's Police Department?
I think it's a pretty consistent thing.
I'm gonna imagine that's a placeholder amount.
Okay.
Exactly. It's theoretical.
For six vehicles, that's, I, I would imagine that's fairly modest, but yeah, it will show up there with the actual revenue happens to be.
Right.
Liquidated.
Okay, and the last comment I have, really, the item hasn't come on the agenda, but I want to know what implication it has on the budget. There is a proposal on the table to accept PPACG funds to the tune of two hundred thousand dollars towards roadworks.
That is on the agenda.
I know it's on the agenda, but, but, so if we, I'm not saying whether we approve it or disapprove it at this point, but if, if we were to approve it, that's going to change the amount we've allocated here. Where's that other two hundred that we are allocating it for now to do that project in twenty twenty-two? Where's that going to be offset or reflected?
Sally, do you want to answer?
That will likely go into the four-ten fund, the street fund, which is where this project.
That will likely go into the four-ten fund, the street fund, which is where this project resides. And if there's a need for a budget amendment, supplemental budget at the end of the year, we can do that.
Okay.
And any, any funds that it offsets that were already appropriated in the four-ten fund. Um, it just, they, they wouldn't be spent out, it would be spent out of that money instead of the regular appropriation. The regular appropriation would just not be spent, and then it would lapse to fund balance at the end of the year.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Bruton.
Sure, good questions.
Yeah.
Council, anything further? General fund?
No.
This is just general.
Well, I, I have a general, um, request, and this is after we finish all of the discussions. The numbers don't align to the last version that we had.
Yeah.
If we could get one final printout after all the discussions and it's all final, if we could get one last one.
Yeah.
So that we can do kind of a little bit more of that.
We will before next agenda.
Thank you.
Okay.
This is just to move it to be voted on.
Sure.
So, so I'm clear, a, a new version of the, the whole book?
Just so our numbers look like what we had here on the.
Okay.
Or you, or y'all could just print it out. Um, once the public hearing is had and the ordinance is passed, staff puts together the final budget and publishes it. And provides the council with a new document.
I'm okay with, is you okay with that? That's fine for me. Do you want to copy before? You want it before?
Yeah.
I would suggest.
Have it prepared before?
Yeah, that, that's a, the, the next hearing is December second, that's.
Right.
Two, that's a pretty tight turnaround and just, I mean, we, we can certainly try. Um, but being that that would be, that packet would be going out to you the day before Thanksgiving. Um, that would be next Wednesday. Um, and revising the book to do that is, is quite a crush, especially with a number of staff members being out on vacation. I think what we might be able to do, uh, in lieu of that.
Well, are the numbers on this agenda basically the numbers that will go into that book?
Yeah, the, yeah, the book will absolutely reflect these numbers.
Yeah.
Um, it just, it takes time to update the whole document.
Right, so there's nothing that's going to change. Probably, unless we do it here like this.
Unless, unless council, um, amends the, this ordinance and wants to change something in, inside the budget. Yeah, these, these numbers are what will be reflected in the adopted budget document.
You guys follow?
It was a bit of a brain drain to go through and do what I did. So I can understand why Rusty's wanting this, but.
So, twice, so, so. The numbers that you see on your packet now, those are the correct numbers, okay? They're not going to change. With the exception of, so we just talked about the general fund, seems nothing's moving, nothing's changing. Now we're going to go on to all other funds where I have a feeling something might change. Those numbers are not reflected in the current packet, okay? So what staff could potentially do then is send you. Those numbers that will change.
Yeah, I guess what we're talking about is where we have, the ordinance is a summary.
Yes.
Uh, the big dollars, the, where we may have a change, if we could just get that section, uh, of detail, so.
Okay, so the only change that's going to happen is if we make a change tonight.
Correct.
So when we get the final document, there won't be any surprises. So for them to try to completely reprint the full budget before Thanksgiving is quite tedious.
That's why I'm asking for just one fund, I think, is where the discussion is going to go.
Okay, so I, Robert, are you, you understand what I'm saying?
I'm fine with what you've answered for me tonight here has taken the discrepancies that I've seen. Uh, and satisfied them, so I don't need another copy until the final. Um, but I do have some more o- other general comments once we finish this whole process.
And I'll just remind the council that the appropriation ordinance is what the count, is the document that the council appropriates. The funds for, it's not this. This is not the appropriation. The ordinance is the appropriation, so I would just remind you of that.
The council member cases, and that ordinance really summary of what we've got detailed out here, isn't that? When you say that, what are you trying to tell me?
That I can tell you that this is a plan, this is a plan for operations.
Yeah.
It will vary daily.
Oh, sure.
And what we see tonight, by the end of January, it will have already changed. And so it's the, it's the best laid plans, and I, my, in my opinion, in a thirteen million dollar budget. The changes that have been made are not substantial. And so, um, that's just my perspective. Because I know what it's like to prepare this. And I'm surprised there weren't more changes needed. So, or updates needed, because things, it's, it's very tedious. Everything crosses over each other and feeds from fund to fund. And so, um, that's just my guidance, if you will, to my fellow council members.
Yeah.
Right, and so I, I guess to maybe put another way, yeah, that this ordinance is the law. That, that this, this is basically, really simply, this is the window dressing around the ordinance.
Right.
And so this document will be revised until it matches this.
Right.
So it doesn't matter what this book says, this is.
That's the ordinance, right.
So this, this will match that. Um, legally, we can't do anything in this book, it doesn't mean anything. This is what dictates how much goes into each department within this fund. That, if that helps. And so, um. Council member Neil, I, you, I want to make sure I understand your, your expectation, your desire. Um, on what, the, the, the changes that you want to see reflected in here, what, what changes?
For the general fund, the, the one hundred fund.
Right.
I'm, I'm satisfied, because what we've all talked about, there's no surprises, we haven't asked to change anything. When we get to all others, which is the next resolution. That one, I think there could be a discussion on one sub-fund, and if that is. Changed, I'd like to get a copy of that one fund.
Absolutely, great. Thank you for clarifying.
Yeah.
Much clearer.
So with that excitement. Council member Neil has set us up for. Could we, please, yes.
This is Suzanne. Um, I do need, when the motion is made, I'm looking at the agenda. It does not say, um, to set the public hearing, so whoever makes the motion, if they can say. Approve the ordinance and at the end say, set the public hearing for December second, twenty twenty-one. That needs to be added in the motion.
Very good.
Can you pop it up on that little screen you've got up there, Suzanne? That would be the easiest way.
I'll do it.
So before we go into a motion, I just want to make one more general comment on this, and that is that. Um, many of us have committed to, uh, do all we can to pay down the debt. And so we're going into a budget year, and we're going into a year where, uh, some of who we are might change. And so the expectation that I'm hoping is, I mean, it's, I'm going to set it on the record from my perspective is, but. Um, it looks to me like with the sort of overages we've had in revenues in two thousand and twenty-one. If that continues into two thousand and twenty-two, we could very realistically pay off the, uh, park. We could very realistically, that we could zero that and save the accumulated interest on that, which is. Nearly a million dollars. So for, for the shortage, whatever that shortfall is between what we're accumulating. And what the payoff is, it seems to me it makes just fiscal sense to target to do that. Because we're going to have, even if it came out of the fund balance. Because we're going to, the difference of that with nine hundred and sixty thousand dollars saved is big, so. Does anybody have any comment on that and how that can be set, um, as the expectation along with this? So the public knows that that is our intention?
And when are you expect, that expectation to be?
The end of two thousand and twenty-two.
Can we pay them off at the end of two thousand and twenty-two?
With the, this, you, you could, um. It, there, there's a couple of pieces in there, and, um, it, so it would be one point nine five million dollars at the end of two thousand and twenty-two. Just as things are right now, um, there would be two point four, two five million dollars outstanding in principle on Memorial Park debt. At the end of two thousand and twenty-two. So you, you have a gap there, uh, but it's, it's not a large one.
That's what I'm saying. Exactly.
It was about six hundred K, wasn't it?
Um, not, yeah, not, not even.
Not even that.
Yeah, it's, it's not, not, so it's, uh, for, for, four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Uh, I, I think. Okay, people are smart, making time. Um, so that, that would be your gap, if you have savings in two thousand and twenty-two. Um, you know, revenue, we, our, um, sales tax projection, we, we generally err on the fairly conservative side.
Right.
This is general rule of thumb, so the way things are going right now, that's very possible, that you could easily do that. Um, and the difficulty we're having hiring, um, could help on the expenditure side. I hope not, but it could, um, because that's been a factor this year too, so.
Okay.
Um, it's, it's entirely reasonable, um, and we have our city attorney, so you don't need me to say it, but. Um, you know, you, you all can express your preference for how to use that money toward debt. Um, but I don't know if there's a, a legislative way to bind that money.
That's why, that's why I'm wondering, because we're going through the whole ordinance part of this now, and it's for this budget year. If we set that, how do we set that into the expectation legally? So, or?
So the numbers are not working for me. The end of two thousand and twenty-two, the certificates of partition, participation. Outstanding principal balance is two million, four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
Correct.
At the end of two thousand and twenty-two, our unreserved fund balance, our complete savings, because the others are reserved for purpose. Is two, five, six, one, four hundred. That leaves us a hundred thousand dollars in, in fund balance for emergencies. That's, I'm not comfortable with that.
That, that's, no, what I'm saying, I'm looking at what the, if you look at what the overage we had in two thousand and twenty-one. Was one point four million dollars in revenues, right? So we have, we don't have a projected overage, we're at a, we're at a budget number, we're not at a projected end-of-year number. If the, if the graph goes as favorably as it did in two thousand and twenty-one. We're going to have an overage, and it could very much be that difference of what the allocation of eighteen or not one nine fifty is. Which is what we've allocated towards that debt. Plus, whatever the difference is to twenty-four, so you're looking at maybe five hundred thousand dollars.
Oh, I, I follow you now.
Now you understand? Yeah, yeah.
I, I was looking at completely different from what you were explaining. Thank you.
Makes sense?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It does.
Yeah.
Um, but that's a what-if.
I totally understand, totally.
And that would be the decision of the council at that time. Yeah, there's no, there's no legal way.
We can't bind.
Okay.
We can only recommend.
We've already found out that we can pay that off in full, so at the next budget, so you're saying at the next budget discussion, it couldn't be.
It would just be a decision of the council at that time, to appropriate for that expenditure.
And, and then on page twenty-three, uh, of your budget, and this will be updated as well, uh, for the final book. It does have an item that says capital debt service reserve.
Yes, it does.
Um, and so it is called out, it is segregated.
Okay.
Um, this may not count for much, but in, in my short time here, I'm pretty well convinced that this community wants this thing paid off. And your successors, I, I think would, would respect that, but, um, beyond that, I don't believe there's much to be done.
Okay.
And you'll be here to mention it. Yes, for sure.
So, Councilmember Neil.
Yeah. You will be here.
Well, I think it's important.
And then the only question I had is, there, is there any restriction to paying it off early, like there is the pool?
Uh, Aaron, do you want to address that one?
As long as, as long as we pay the total balance, we can prepay it.
Right, excellent. Very good, so.
Yeah.
And I think the importance is, we've had these, for the public, is we had these discussions in the workshop. If this council were this, exactly, the council going forward. We were looking at ways to get paid, or, pay off the, the, uh, memorial park. Um, instead of just keep putting it up and putting it up for the, uh, aquatic center, because that one's still out there and you. We can't even touch it until the, the COPs come due.
Right.
In about three years or five years, something like that, twenty twenty-five. So, uh, I, I think it's good, Robert, that you've explained that to them and, um, and. Kelly, that you are comfortable with those numbers, because I thought we were fairly comfortable with that as an aspiration. After the work session, when we talked a little bit about that.
Yes, and like I, I always say, I, it needs to have, um, good analysis and, and.
Right.
What conditions we're in at the time that we're considering.
Yeah.
Um, because things change.
Yeah.
And they can change quickly, so.
True enough.
And I know this staff would, would, uh, guide the council in that direction. Okay, very good.
We want to pay it off too.
Yeah. So with that, may I?
Yes, please.
Oh, no, I'm lying. I don't see anyone in the audience.
Initial posting, we don't have.
They're here.
But is there, are there any hands on Zoom?
There are no hands up.
Okay, very good. I will make a motion, uh, to approve ordinance fourteen oh seven, series twenty twenty-one. On initial posting as presented and set the public hearing for December second, twenty twenty-one. Now, second.
Did Suzanne say we had to add something?
That she did it exactly.
Perfect.
Just like you wanted, huh?
And you may vote, council.
Council, I have a quick question for you guys. Do you want to take a break now?
No.
Or? I have no questions in the next one.
Can we just get through that one and then take a break?
Sure.
Yeah.
Hold on. Everything.
Kelly's challenged.
I have.
My tab went. Hold on.
Kelly's experiencing technical difficulties.
I'm voting yes, Suzanne, if you want to move on.
Okay, I'm going to just fill it in as yes.
Thank you.
Motion has, I thank you, council, motion has passed unanimously.
Very good. Thank you, council, and thanks for the good questions. And being very thoughtful with the budget. And we're going to move on. We're on to item B, under eight, and that's to consider on initial posting ordinance fourteen oh eight, which is all other funds. And I know that there's discussion to be had.
Did you know, just, just an incredulous question, and it's a very small amount, so it's not like I'm losing my sleep over, but. We've done so well with revenues and everything, why are we using a fund balance in the grants fund of a hundred and thirty-eight thousand, five hundred and seventy?
I can answer that if you want.
Please, yeah, I mean, it's probably obvious, I just, I don't know what it is.
Sometimes grants cross multiple years.
Okay.
And so it may be in the, the fund balance, because it was a grant that we received last year, and we didn't complete the grant, and so we are completing it now. Typically, that's the way it is. If there's a fund balance in the grant fund, it's because those grants cross years. Aaron, is there any clarification needed?
Yeah.
Correct, it, it's the ARP funds that are carrying over. That we're going to spend from the first tranche that we had in two thousand and twenty-one, and then we're going to spend a little bit of that portion into two thousand and twenty-two.
Aaron, you need to remind me to shut up and let you answer the questions. You have my permission.
No, thank you very much.
It's okay, Aaron, I remember you, just not public comment. I'll always call you out, so, for help and information. I would like to, to bring something up, um. And it, it's just been heavy on my heart, because it's something that I've talked about for many years, and it, and it has to do with. The legal services in the DDA budget. Um, I'm, I'm not going to, and, and Lena has explained to me, it's not. Um, it's not appropriate to make that line item zero, because the, the statute does require that. They have access to counsel as they work through their business, um, of the DDA. And, and we've had the conversation that when. A viable project comes forward that is has proof of funds and. A plan and something that is that appears to be viable. For the lack of a better word, that we would make whatever resources needed available and available. That resources that are available make them available to the DDA. Because the council does appropriate spending. Um, so I just would like to open that up. I'd like to see that number. Reduced. Maybe by fifty percent, knowing that if, because I know that the DDA is in the process of searching for. Um, and and then selecting a new council for representation. And so the there might be expense there, of course, in that search. So there needs to be some funding for that. Um, but but I don't see them in incurring a great deal of legal cost at this point. Because they don't have legal counsel yet. So I that's just a thought I had because it's just something that weighs on my heart. I've seen a great deal. Of money go through that line. And and I also would like to share that I was at the meeting and the board did approve. A policy that not no one board member. Can engage the services, the legal counsel or other expenses without the approval of the board. That gives me a good level of comfort as well. Um, that I that wasn't in place before. And although I think that that's goes without saying, it just wasn't how things were. How things transpired in the past. So. That's just, I'm not going to throw a number out. I'm thinking fifty percent. There's no basis for that, but I just did that for conversation.
In in truth be told, Kelly and I had talked a little bit about this. And this is the one fund I wanted to kind of go down into the details because. There was the thirty five hundred dollars that they did approve for the asbestos abatement. And the numbers don't jive. So. I I want to know where the the thirty five hundred is in their budget. Because all we have is the summary in the ordinance. If we can talk about that, because then we can take a look at that legal services. Uh, perhaps the thirty five hundred comes out of the. It comes out of that and then, you know, bring it down to like a five thousand or six thousand dollar legal service. Pending a true project with all the details. That one would expect to see on a professional proposal come forward. And Kelly, you've been consistent since I've known you. Anytime some the DDA needs to have additional funds for something, they can always come back for a supplemental. And I think this council will work towards getting that approved. It's just, I'd like to start with, keep again, sharpening the pencils where we can. So, Michael, can you kind of go down the the numbers on the the two fifteen fund and tell me where the thirty five hundred ended up?
And I'll I'll defer to Erin. I think we added it in the same historical preservation line that we had done.
That is correct.
Okay, yeah, it's it won't be reflected here, though. Obviously, because it's not in that the level of detail.
So it'll have its own line item identified to describe what the expenses.
Okay, so you'll you'll still have like the twenty twenty one, twenty one beautification. You have the twenty four hundred, the TIF reimbursements, but there will be some subline inserted in there. Um, with the thirty five hundred and then the thirty two ten, which is the legal services. Um, it's let's assume we take the thirty five hundred out of that number, trying to stay as close to what they had requested. That would leave right around, what, nine thousand?
So and and Erin can correct me if I'm wrong. I I believe the thirty five hundred is already in there. Um, and so you're not.
It's in the ordinance, I think, because it's off by.
So if you were to trim the six thousand two fifty that you're talking about, it would just, it would drop the whole budget by that.
So we could take the thirty two ten line item down to. You know, what what would be the consensus, five thousand or six thousand? Um, and you've already got the thirty five hundred in the ordinance number.
So including the four hundred for salary for professional services.
Correct. So.
It would just go.
Oh, they tried to increase.
Yeah, decrease it by fifty percent. So the whole budget, uh, the the thirty two ten line and the whole budget would drop by this sixty two fifty.
So help me understand why this wasn't brought up at the last DDA meeting to with their committee. How come we're crunching DDA numbers now and why this wasn't done at the DDA meeting amongst the DDA board who all have.
They did the crunching before the attorney. Motion to terminate Paul Benadetti. So they had these numbers submitted and they never came back. I'd ask for another meeting of the DDA to go back over the numbers. To re discuss it. They never held another meeting, so it was never discussed again.
Well, if we remember when we lost our attorney for the city, uh, we had discussions about dropping that number and. I think the council at the time was, we're going to have that cost. We're going to have the same cost, no matter which one of the attorneys is going to be. And so they recommended that we leave that. That budget number in there. What makes that any difference with the DDA? And what I'm most and what I'm really rising is why are we as council trying to change their budget? Which they can, what they um, came to a to a vote on that that's what they wanted. And I'm just wondering what sort of extenuating circumstances we think we have to go and change that now. It's the same as ours. It's the same as our budget if it's not going to be used.
I recuse myself from all discussions on the DDA budget because I wanted to preserve my vote for the council. So I did not participate in any discussions at the DDA on the budget. I did not vote in it. So so I've preserved it so I can do this discussion here.
Well, a little bit of the irony of I respect what you're saying and I hear you.
Yeah.
But the irony too is they asked for professional services and we got a budget that didn't even have it in there. So we had to add it in there. I mean, so they didn't fine tune, you know, they didn't fine tune their budget before it came in front of us. And then when we had our workshop, they never met again to go over anything we talked about. And no one, I no, for me, no one has reached out to me to even discuss their budget. So and they don't have to, that's fine. But um, so there's kind of two sides to what you're saying in the sense of, you know what, frankly, I'll be. I will frankly, I will be frank. They were a little sloppy.
They were sloppy and it was their first year.
Yeah, and it's a new board and they're learning. But and but the there are, there are also two sides to this discussion, the one of. Yes, we control the budget, but also by statute, they are allowed to have. Money budgeted for legal services, but but they can ask for how much they want and we then we get to decide whether that's appropriate or not. That's how it's not micromanaging. That's how it works. So and we could argue it's micromanaging, you know, but it is what it is. So so.
This body is the only body that can appropriate spending of any public funds.
Right, so. And then and this is the time before we finalize things to bring up questions or concerns that you want to bring up. So. So here we are.
Yeah. Yeah, so if you're if you're um, getting sleepless nights, Councilman Reale, I don't want to be part of that problem.
That was me. It's been weighing on me. It hasn't gotten away.
I have no issue where it stands, but if council would like to do something, I am happy to to consent to that.
I also don't have an issue with where it stands, but if there's more of you who want to change it than not, I'm not gonna, you know, it's like. It's nine o'clock. It's a perfect time to break, so.
Sixteen, sixteen two fifty would require.
So we have a consensus to drop the the legal services to sixty two fifty? Do we need to vote for that or just consensus?
Consensus.
Suzanne, this isn't a lower.
Because you're, yeah, you're revising the ordinance.
Right.
I think.
Yes, when you make the motion. When you make the motion, if you could put that you're reducing the budget.
Oh, okay.
Appropriation by that amount.
Okay.
Okay.
And add December second, twenty twenty one. Okay, so is there someone who would like to make the motion with the fixed number and add?
Well, is there any other fund that we need to talk about? Because that was the only one that Kelly and I really had.
You can't make a motion, you got a public comment.
That's right. Thank you, Robert. Also, okay. Are there any hands on zoom, Suzanne?
There are none.
Okay, and I see none in the audience. We have such a captivated audience right now in this discussion.
I do see a DDA member. He's actually not here as a DDA, though.
All right, so can I get a motion then?
Is it to approve fourteen oh eight?
It is to approve fourteen oh eight with the.
Yeah, okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance number fourteen oh eight, series twenty twenty one. As presented in the packet with the modification that line. Two, one, five, seven, one, zero, three, two, one, zero. Be reduced to six, two, five, zero. And we set the public hearing for December second, twenty twenty one.
Is that basically just going to reflect the decrease in this number?
I'll second the expenditure.
And so we we would bring back a revised ordinance, but reflecting that change. And we and we will get you an updated.
Yeah, that's.
It's one page.
That's the page.
So we have motion in a second.
We're just waiting for Suzanne.
So I just want to clarify. So we are reducing the legal fees to sixty two fifty or?
Six thousand two fifty.
Okay, I wanted to make sure that I had that correct. See the motion in a minute. You may vote, counsel.
Problem child.
Okay, I know really exciting topics coming up next too. We're going to wait for the. For Suzanne to tell us what happened and then we're going to take a break.
Thank you, counsel. Motion has passed unanimously.
Excellent. Thank you, counsel.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to take a break. I'll say ten minutes. If we're back before that, great, we'll carry on. So nine thirteen, everyone should be back. and go to public hearings, because we have two gentlemen who are here from Denver waiting for us. And then if we could also just do B and get our, not to get our audience out of here, but to get these gentlemen. We're tired of seeing you.
To be respectful of your time.
Dawn, one day if you give me something on the agenda, I'll skip to it so you could leave, but I know you wouldn't. So we're happy to have you here. But, counsel, do you mind if we just skip to public hearings, get that out of the way so these guys can get on their, on their way?
Sure.
I just want to say that I miss you, Suzanne, because normally we have these little chocolates that help with blood sugar. This time.
You could get, you could get our Rob for not putting the candy out there.
Rob.
Don't worry, Suzanne, we were up in your office looking for your secrets.
It's right under, it's right under my desk. There's the whole pack.
Yeah. All right, so we're gonna go and move on to nine public hearings. And we're gonna go to nine A, which is approval of an off-premise fermented malt beverage liquor license for Alpine Highlands Incorporated. This is at Valero. Valero previously had a liquor license already. It's just that it's changing hands with ownership. So it's just new ownership. So Suzanne, if you'd like to present that.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, and thank you, counsel, for considering having my client here go next. They are few in the audience tonight. We have Alpine Highlands Incorporated, and they are located at the Valero Gas Station, which is at 520 West Highway 24. I think all of council knows where this is. The applicant has a current sales tax license and FEIN number, and the applicant submitted a petition signed by 30 local residents and/or business owners stating that this business is desirable and that people would like this business and that it meets the requirements of the neighborhood. The location is eligible to be licensed. Proof of possession of the premises has been received. The city clerk's office received the application on October 8th. Public notice was published on November 8th, 2021 on the city's website. Character of this app, of these applicants is not an issue for this hearing, and all applicable fees have been paid. I know they would be interested in coming up to the podium if counsel desires to say a few words about what they're going to be doing new at their gas station. And upon, after interviewing them, I would just recommend approval of this liquor license. Thank you, counsel.
Great, thank you. Gentlemen, if you'd like to come up to the podium, you're welcome to, and just introduce yourselves as the new owners and. And thank you for waiting.
Thank you, counsel. Good evening, and all good land parks, students. My name is Prakash.
Wow.
No, go closer to it.
So my name is Prakash Sapada, and we both are partners.
Good evening, councils. My name is Pastor Timina. I have been doing the retail business for 2007. And originally, I'm from Nepal. It's a mountainous area. So we just, you know, I have a poor business in Denver and the Lakewood area, and just we started with the Valero Gas. And we are seeking for help to get the beer license, firm beer license. Thank you.
Very good. Counsel, any questions?
So are you finding the altitude all right here? Is it like home?
Yeah. More than this altitude.
So I only have one other question. Are you gonna offer Nepalese fast food at your restaurant? I mean, at your gas station?
Yeah, obviously, you know, so we are planning to open another restaurant and maybe the full liquor stores somewhere else in Ullak Park area.
Oh, very good.
And that's our future plan.
That would be excellent. Very good. Counsel, anything further? All right, well, welcome to our community with your business, and we look forward to having you up here. Welcome. Thank you for waiting. We're gonna do a motion.
I know. She's gonna do a public hearing.
Call a vote. And I always forget to do public hearings, so everyone loves to remind me. And I need it, so. All right, so Suzanne, do you have anyone on Zoom?
No, ma'am, I do not.
All right, and I have six people left in the audience, and two are the applicants, so I don't see anyone.
So therefore, I move to approve the off-premise fermented malt beverage liquor license for Alpine Highlands Incorporated, DBA Valero. So I approve their liquor license.
I'll second.
The rest has to happen.
Counsel, was that Councilmember Nakai that I heard second that?
Yes.
Thank you. You may vote, counsel.
Here's the drum roll now.
Thank you, welcome.
Thank you very much.
Do we give a? There's your results.
Thank you, counsel. Motion has passed unanimously.
Very good. All right, so now we're gonna move on to item B. And that is approval of Foster's Edition filing number four, and our presenter is Sally Riley. Thank you, Mayor Protem. I am going to load up a brief PowerPoint. Nine B, under the, under the public hearings. We just skipped to both of those.
So it's the next one down on the, in the packet?
Yeah.
Yep.
Foster additions. Oh, this is David, okay. All right.
Share the screen. Okay. There we go.
Now, Rob, we should be able to share the screen. This is a minor subdivision replat of lots 10, 11, and 12 in block 14 of the Foster's Edition. And let's see. PowerPoint to move along here. Here we go. And it is located, the parcel, there are three lots located on East Chester Avenue and Fairview Street. And the Fountain Creek drainage runs directly through the middle of this property. And David Miharris is here this evening, who is the property owner and has begun construction of homes on the west side of this parcel shown in orange. And we'll go on. This is the final plat that was in your packet. I know that's hard to read. But the way it is currently platted, lots 10, 11, and 12 are traversed by the Fountain Creek drainage. And there is an existing easement, and the city did the improvements to this drainage way, Fountain Creek portion back in 1999. And then, so the Miharris's have owned this property for a number of years, quite a couple of decades, actually. And this has been replatted in such a fashion that there is a nice building site for lot one, lot two, and then tract A encumbers the floodplain and the creek so that it can be deeded to the city, which that is a good public service, is to pull private property out of the floodway and manage those creeks by the public entity. So here's a layout of the two lots with homes that are located on this area. Mr. Miharris has also obtained a flood hazard permit so that we can ensure that these homes, even though they are outside the floodplain, that they are fully protected and built at least one foot above the base flood elevation. So that has been approved, and they will be certified once construction is completed of these foundations and the first floor level. There are no basements in these homes.
There's no basements?
No basements. Here is a photo of that general area, lot one to your left, tract A, the Fountain Creek section that carries the stormwater from basically the Fountain Creek floodway. And then lot two, that is adjacent to Fairview Street. This final plat does comply with the plat preparation, the necessary information, the supplemental materials, and any other documents needed. There is a dedic, there is no dedication of right-of-way or park capital fees or a dedication of park, because this was platted in the 1890s. The design standards for subdivision, minor subdivision, have been complied with. There is adequate street frontage. The names and numbers of the streets are adequate. The easements, we did have a request by CORE, or formerly IREA, to widen the easement on the north side next to the unused alley so that the utility, electric utility lines can be installed in that area. And all the dimensional standards for the lots have been met. This has been public, published in the newspaper. Adjacent property owners have been informed. Posters have been on-site. And it was, the plat was reviewed by various departments, including the fire department, IREA, or CORE, Black Hills Century Link, without any comments other than the additional wider easement on the north portion of the, these lots. So with that, staff and planning commission recommend approval of this minor subdivision with a few conditions. First of all, the applicant will provide title insurance for the dedication of the Fountain Creek tract A to the city in the amount of 24,000 per acre. They'll revise the public utility easement on the north boundary of the alley. There will be assurance that there will be no impact to Fountain Creek floodway, that their materials and methods that they'll be using for building will minimize any flood damage. And we will.
My name is Prakash.
No, go closer to it.
So my name is Prakash Sapada and like we both have partners.
Good evening, council. My name is Pastor Timina. I have been doing the retail business for 2007. And originally I'm from Nepal. It's a Mount Everest area. So we just, you know, I have a poor business in Denver and the Lakewood area and just we bought, uh, started with the Olero Gas. And we are seeking for the help to get the beer license, beer license. Thank you.
Very good. Counsel, any questions?
So are you finding the altitude all right here? Is it like home?
Yeah. More than this altitude.
So I only have one other question. Are you going to offer Nepalese fast food at your restaurant? I mean, at your gas station?
Yeah, obviously, you know, so we are planning to open another restaurant and maybe the food liquor stores somewhere else in Woodland Park area.
Oh, very good.
And that's our future plan.
That would be excellent. Very good. Counsel, anything further? All right. Well, welcome to our community with your business and we look forward to having you up here. Welcome. Thank you for waiting. We're gonna do a motion and I know.
She's gonna do a public hearing.
Call vote. And I always forget to do public hearings, so everyone loves to remind me, so. And I need it, so. All right. So Suzanne, do you have anyone on Zoom?
No ma'am, I do not.
All right, and I have six people left in the audience and two are the applicants, so I don't see anyone.
So therefore, I move to approve the off-premise fermented malt beverage liquor license for Alpine Highlands Incorporated DBA Valero. So approved their liquor license.
I'll second.
The rest has to happen.
Counsel, was that Councilmember Nakai that I heard second that?
Yes.
Thank you. You may vote, counsel.
Here's the drum roll now.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you very much.
Do you give up? There's your results.
Thank you, counsel. Motion has passed unanimously.
Very good. All right. So now we're going to move on to item B. And that is approval of Foster's addition filing number four and our presenter is Sally Riley.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. I am going to load up a brief PowerPoint.
Nine B, under the, under the public hearings. We just skipped to both of those.
So it's the next one down on the, in the packet, yeah.
Yep.
Foster additions. Oh, this is David. Okay. All right.
Share the screen. Okay. There we go.
Now, Rob, we should be able to share the screen. This is a minor subdivision replat of lots 10, 11, and 12 in block 14 of the Foster's addition. And let's see. PowerPoint to move along here. Here we go. And it is located, the parcel, there are three lots located on East Chester Avenue and Fairview Street. And the Fountain Creek drainage runs directly through the middle of this property. And David Miharis is here this evening, who is the property owner and has begun construction of homes on the west side of this parcel shown in orange. And we'll go on. This is the final plat that was in your packet. I know that's hard to read. But the way it is currently platted, lots 10, 11, and 12 are traversed by the Fountain Creek drainage and there is an existing easement. And the city did the improvements to this drainage way Fountain Creek portion back in 1999. And then, so the Miharises have owned this property for a number of years, quite a couple of decades, actually. And this has been replatted in such a fashion that there is a nice building site for lot one, lot two, and then tract A encumbers the floodplain and the creek so that it can be deeded to the city, which that is a good public service is to pull private property out of the floodway and manage those creeks by the public entity. So here's a layout of the two lots with homes that are located on this area. Mr. Miharis has also obtained a flood hazard permit so that we can ensure that these homes, even though they are outside the floodplain, that they are fully protected and built at least one foot above the base flood elevation. So that has been approved and they will be certified once construction is completed of these foundations and the first floor level. There are no basements in these homes.
There's no basements?
No basements. Here is a photo of that general area, lot one to your left, tract A, the Fountain Creek section that carries the stormwater from basically the Fountain Creek floodway. And then lot two, that is adjacent to Fairview Street. This final plat does comply with the plat preparation, the necessary information, the supplemental materials, and any other documents needed. There is a dedic-, there is no dedication of right of way or park capital fees or a dedication of park because this was platted in the 1890s. The design standards for subdivision, minor subdivision have been complied with. There is adequate street frontage. The names and numbers of the streets are adequate. The easements, we did have a request by Core or formerly IREA to widen the easement on the north side next to the unused alley so that the utility, electric utility lines can be installed in that area and all the dimensional standards for the lots have been met. This has been publica-, published in the newspaper. Adjacent property owners have been informed, posters have been on site. And it was, the plat was reviewed by various departments, including the fire department, IREA or Core, Black Hills Century Link, without any comments other than the additional wider easement on the north portion of the, these lots. So with that, staff and planning commission recommend approval of this minor subdivision with a few conditions. First of all, the applicant will provide title insurance for the dedication of the Fountain Creek tract A to the city and the amount of 24,000 per acre. They'll revise the public utility easement on the north boundary of the alley. There will be assurance that there will be no impact to Fountain Creek floodway that their materials and methods that they'll be using for building will minimize any flood damage. And we will encourage property owners to procure flood insurance just to protect themselves, but it's not required since the entire floodplain will be off lots one and two. And it does require a post-construction certificate of compliance for the elevation of the first floor of these homes to be above, the one foot above the base flood elevation in Fountain Creek. So with that, the planning commission recommends approval as well as the staff and Mr. Miharis is here this evening and would be happy to answer any questions.
Counsel?
Sally, I just have one question. When you say the base floodplain, is that the 100-year plain or is it a different one?
It's, it's, it's the 100-year storm, yes.
Counsel, do you have any questions for the applicant? Robert?
I have two.
But we're gonna have him come up to the podium.
Oh.
Well, yeah, and if there's anything you'd like to say beforehand or?
Yeah.
No, I think Sally explained everything really. It should be pretty simple to get some customer. Nathan Maharis, applicant engineer in Woodland Park.
So my first question is, is there any pedestrian traffic through this floodplain?
There's not. It's actually blocked on the north side of the alley with a fence from the adjacent neighbor.
And that's been for a while. Okay. And my second question was, and I don't know whether you know the answer to this or Sally does, but where do we determine a price of $24,000 an acre? That's gotta be the cheapest land in Woodland Park.
That's something that needs to be updated in our subdivision regulations. It's probably been in there for 30 years.
So is that something, is that an amount we are paying Mr. Maharis for?
No, no, he's paying us.
He's paying us 20?
We're not paying you. You're required to provide title insurance and the amount of $24,000 for in conveyance of the land to the city, free of charge.
So you're conveying it free of charge?
Yes.
And, and it's just an insurance number that the $24,000 per acre is?
Title insurance on the parcel we're conveying.
Okay.
The only thing that encumbers that parcel is the existing city.
Which is because it's in the floodplain?
The easement was for the improvements when the city constructed it.
Oh, was it? Okay, okay. All right, that clears it up. Thank you. Yeah.
Counsel, anything further?
No more DDA questions.
No, this is QJ. We can't do that.
Very good, Robert. I know.
Okay, thank you for waiting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Suzanne, do you have any hands raised on Zoom?
Dawn was in?
Not. There aren't any.
Okay, seeing none in the audience, because we had six, now we're down to four. Counsel, can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Foster's addition filing number four, the minor subdivision as requested by Stacked Hands LLC as presented by the planning director.
I'll second.
Counsel, you may vote.
After this, the audience will be down to two.
Thank you, counsel. Motion has passed five zero.
Very good. Thank you. Thanks for your patience to waiting for us. All right. So now, counsel, we're going to carry back to ordinances on initial postings to HC. And that will be Sally Riley presenting as well for ordinance number 1409.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem.
Before you start, Nina, can you tell us what page we're on?
Yes.
Page 54.
Thank you.
This is ordinance on initial posting for a conditional use permit preliminary plat and site plan review for Tamarack Park, which is a multifamily residential development consisting of 55 townhomes and three apartment buildings totaling 100 altogether, 167 units on 12.44 acres, has a gross density of 13.46 dwelling units. It is located on Tamarack Parkway between Tamarack Parkway and State Highway 67, lots six and seven, Tamarack Tech Park, filing number five. I would recommend that you approve this on initial posting and set the public hearing for December 2nd.
Counsel, questions, comments?
Well, comment, I went on to the website and watched the video of the deliberations of the commission on this. And I thank you. That was a good presentation.
Wait, of the planning commission?
Planning commission, yeah.
This is QJ, isn't it?
Well, I wanted to understand the background. I'm not gonna prove something. I haven't got an understanding of what they came.
Yeah, it's an issue when it's quasi judicial. We're supposed to remain away from all of that so that we're impartial when it comes before us here. Like, you could have met with Sally?
I couldn't meet with her?
No, you could meet with Sally to have her explain what was going on, but you couldn't, you're not supposed to watch the planning commission's meetings and the public's comments. I know, I just, I thought you had it too, just a minute ago.
This is QJ. So, because the decision that you're making?
Isn't being ignorant.
The decision you're making is based upon the public hearing. It's in front of you, which will be in two weeks. And the planning commission minutes, I believe, are in the packet.
No, they're not in the packet. That's why I went, that's why I went to watch it.
We just include the ordinance.
For the first.
On initial posting in order to set the public hearing. So this is a perfunctory activity and just to move it along so that it can be posted for public hearing.
And Sally, the planning commission's write-up, though, comes in the final packet.
That's right.
That he would eventually be exposed to. He's just jumped the gun two weeks.
Yes.
Yes.
So I voluntarily recuse myself, as you guys do, whichever you're gonna do.
For just leaving it for.
Circumstance, if, you know, in two weeks, you can just disclose that you watched the planning commission, but you're still open and can make a fair decision based on the public hearing in front of you. And that's, that's fine.
Yeah, I don't have a dog in the fight. I'm just like, wonder, yeah, okay.
Yeah, just, just be mindful, counsel, of whenever you see the word QJ next to something we have on our agenda, stay the hell away from it. Literally, online, on Facebook, on Nextdoor, your neighbors, your.
Talk about people.
Right, right. And I'm not directing it just you, the whole of council, because it's, you're not the only one. Trust me, so. Right. But whenever it says QJ on that agenda, just stay away from that topic until the public hearing happens. At that time is when we get our questions in, all the information is gathered, and then you can make a fair and impartial decision. But until then, stay the hell away from it.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
I don't think I could be more clear.
And for the record, Michael just said the only thing he remembers about the QJ workshop was Vince Lombardi.
Yeah, this is a football, right? This is a football. There's a football.
Okay. Are we ready? I don't, I don't think that counsel has an issue with what happened. So, and if any council member felt there was an issue, we can always raise a vote to recuse another council member from their vote, but I don't, that is not my issue whatsoever, but.
So then it's really inappropriate for me to, part I've highlighted to ask a question about, to ask a question.
I know.
There's really no, there's not, yeah.
It's frustrating because you want to be as educated as possible.
Keep your question.
You'll get that. Yeah.
You guys go ahead and vote.
And remember.
I know, I've been in timeout before. I got it.
And counsel, remember, these are, this is ordinances on initial posting. So initial posting means they're telling us this thing is coming and we're agreeing to get it to the most important part, which is the public hearing. But the initial posting, it's not, not the important part. It's, it's that it's the process that gets us to the most important part, where then we have all of our questions and concerns. And, but I just always ask you guys if you have comments or questions, because that's my job and I just want to make sure I'm not overlooking anyone. So at the end of everything we do, I always say, counsel, questions or comments? Because who knows? There could, and we can have questions and comments. We just have to be careful on initial posting what they are, so.
So don't even read the newspaper.
No, you really, I, I literally throw the newspaper away. It comes in the mail for free and it goes right in my trash. I don't even look at it. So, sorry journalists, not to offend anyone.
I'm sure Pat Hill.
Yeah, it's not, it's not due to the journalism. It's just, I just, I don't need to know until I get here, so. Are we ready? I don't know, are we?
I'm ready. I could stop.
I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance number 1409, series 2021, for a conditional use permit, preliminary plat and site plan review for Tamarack Park as presented and set the public hearing for December 2nd, 2021.
I'll second it. That was Rusty, Suzanne.
Thank you. Counsel, you may vote. So, Robert, are you not voting?
Yeah, I'm on, I'm on the, in what they call the dugout.
You're in the naughty list?
The penalty box. I'm in the penalty box, yeah.
Okay, I'm just gonna put abstain for you then. Okay, motion carried for with councilmember Zulawaga not voting. Thank you.
Awesome. Now we are on to 10B. Skipping all the way down again to new business. For the motion to approve intergovernmental agreements with the Colorado Department of Transportation in the amount of 200,000 to be used for reservicing the Baldwin Street and Rampart Range, and Sally Riley will present that.
And Nina, what page is this one?
73.
This intergovernmental agreement, Rob, if you can share the screen, please. I think. Thank you. Is for a portion of Baldwin Street and Rampart Range Road. This is a $200,000 relief stimulus, stimulus relief funds that were shared within the Pike's Peak region. And this is to do the mill and overlay of Baldwin, South Baldwin Street, starting down by McDonald's and then moving on north toward Chester Avenue and then past the school, the Gateway Elementary School and the Aquatics Center. This overall project is a little bit over a million dollars, so this $200,000 is a gift from the federal government to help pay for these improvements and then it would, the overlay is all the way to Kelly's Road north of the schools. So it's really a gift that came from the stimulus relief dollars. And this is in order to try to stimulate construction and improvements to the community. So we recommend that you approve the intergovernmental agreement and know that this is more of a maintenance agreement, even though it's quite lengthy. Most of the conditions will not apply to the city's project. I'm happy to answer any questions. Yes.
Sally, is the total for the project
It is, yes.
Okay, so in addition to 200, we still have the 1.016 million that we put in the budget.
Yes.
Rats, I was hoping it would be 800.
And we're, we're getting ready to bid this out, so soon we'll see how it comes in. And I should add that the highway is going to be overlaid this year as well, so we think that the timing of these projects will be really advantageous, that we might be able to get a contractor who is doing C dot work as well as local government work.
Very good. Robert?
On page 17 of our budget, it says that the street improvements pavement management plus recommends 4,243,320. Am I just not turning the page? Because it says construction of a full-depth reclamation on Kelly Road and from Highway 67 to Baldwin.
So that budget amount includes Kelly's. This portion is just for Rampart Range Road and Baldwin.
Okay. Um. So as I read through this and Nina, I didn't read through it all, but I just read enough of it for me to go, oh, God, I hate big government. I so hate big government. 18 says governmental immunity, page 21. 22 is federal requirements. 23 is disadvantaged business enterprise, which concerns me. That's so unconstitutional to have disadvantaged businesses, who are disadvantaged businesses? When you start selecting in the community who's, who can bid on this and who can't, that kind of gives me.
What section? Just so I could look at it with you. I know you said page 22, but.
Uh, so first one was page, item 22, federal requirements of disadvantaged business. What 21 to start with?
I'll look at 22, so I just want to look at it. A very federal requirements. Okay, so of exhibit G. So now I just gotta pull down to exhibit G. What was the other question? So maybe?
Well, those are basically them. So I'm concerned about this disadvantaged business enterprise because now the entire project gets tainted with having to have requirements of these contractors who are a disadvantaged business enterprise, which to me is such a crock. You know, it's like every business has a right to contend for it. I don't go with the idea that because of the color of your skin or what sort of clothes you wear, that makes a difference in terms of whether you can bid for a project. And so that bothers me that there, that even though we're getting this give me money, we're also having to give away how we do business. And I'm wanting to have a better understanding of that.
So I'm just turning to now exhibit G, page 112. It says the policy is that disadvantaged business enterprises shall have a maximum opportunity to participate. I'm seeing if there's, I understand your question. I'm seeing if there's a further requirement or is it just a statement?
I've highlighted it. I'll read it as soon as I can scan through here and find it. You probably know what page it was on, so.
Oh, 112 is, is exhibit G, yeah.
Oh, gee.
So now I'm seeing.
Actually, the the requirements of that. Oh, where'd it go? What page is it? 112?
112 is the exhibit G, which it points to.
That's what I think we're looking for here.
And then it says the policy is C dot, that disadvantaged business enterprise should have the maximum opportunity to participate.
Then it defined it. I can't find where it defined it.
So counsel? Yeah, look, I don't see a requirement. It just said that basically that they're not, you know, everyone has a maximum opportunity, but if you find something.
Well, and then it requires us that we, we actually pay for this. If we violate this thing, then we end up, it comes out of our pocket to have to pay for this disadvantaged whatever, if somehow we don't get the law right. And if that's not the way we usually do business, that's why I wish Kip was here to ask him, what sort of contractors we usually use. Do you know?
Well, I do know that in the past. Well, I do know that in the past, the barricade company is owned by a woman. And nearly all the contractors use this barricade company in order to satisfy that need.
Ah, so they know how to play the game already.
Yes.
And it just says recipients shall not discriminate on the basis of race, color, not that they're given special treatment as far as I'm reading it. So it's just saying that they, you filed the, the state program, which says that all business, disadvantaged business opportunities are the maximum opportunity to compete for. And we, we have that kind of process, the RFP process and that we will not discriminate on the basis of race, color, national origin. I have no reason to believe that we.
So you can't do that anyway. So. Group to me is all of a sudden you're being pejorative against the rest of the folks. And, and so I'm just cautioning my fellow council, like I'm on PBJ, PPACG. So to get two hundred thousand dollars appropriated into Woodland Park is from, from the pool PPC, PPACG money is a worthy consideration. But my caution is once we start saying, oh, great, we'll get some handouts. There's our strings attached to, we have to be careful. That's not gonna mess us up in the way we live our lives to conform to some of this nonsense that comes out of Washington DC. So. And it's not constitutional. It may, it may be a law, but it's not constitutional. So.
I don't see a requirement. I just see that it says that we will not discriminate and we will give everyone the maximum opportunity. And I have no reason to believe that the city doesn't already give the maximum opportunity to anybody. And, and you know, this doesn't, this is just drafted probably to make people, it doesn't really do much other than say we're not going to discriminate, which we don't anyway. It doesn't go as far as to say we have to follow a certain pool of of, you know, of businesses.
It's under liability somewhere is where I had, had it, the liability. If we don't follow that.
I just don't see any requirement so far. I understand the question though.
I thought I'd highlighted, but I guess I didn't save it.
Hold on. So I'm just going back to the contract where you say liability on two hundred twenty two. Let's see. I'm going back to twenty three where it just says we'll comply with those requirements. It's really, when you go to G, that's not a requirement other than not, you know, giving it the full opportunity and not discriminating. And then it's in under twenty three, if they use any state approved DB program, shall be. So if, if, if the, it says if the local agency, which is the city, use, use the state approved program, if that were to be the case, then they responsible to defend the program and its use of the program against all legal challenges.
Yeah, that's the part.
Yeah, I would hope, I, I don't, I don't know if it's just a, you know, how that works. Not, you know, being on the side of the, you know, like the, the public work side. It just, if, if the state's agency uses that type of program that we have. I don't real, I don't, it does not clear as to what it is defending, or you know, I think if we hire a contractor, they're usually have to have their own insurance and we have our, you know, our insurance.
I'm sorry.
It's okay. I'm just gonna ask Sally a question real quick. Is this language you've seen before? I mean, is this new?
No, it's not new. It's part of the Civil Rights Act. To ensure that you give every opportunity on a fair and equal basis, that you're not discriminating.
Yeah.
So who's, who's the franchised? I get who's the disenfranchised, who's the franchised? So somebody's franchised.
I know. This, this could be an hour's worth of debate. So.
Well, it's what, I just want us to be cautious not to be entering into, into an agreement on a seventy five paid contract. Come back and bite us in the butt when it's only two hundred thousand dollars of a one point something million dollar.
So.
That's all.
I hear what you're saying and it's a good flag for people to pay attention to. But at the same time, this contract language is historic to the city and their experience. And they're clever and reading their contracts and understand how to meet those obligations.
I'm not making that assumption. I'm making a challenge to it because it has, and I'm saying this because we have the, moving forward with the prospect of a reliever route. That's, that's real liaison with.
That language will be in, because it is a part of the Civil Rights Act, which is federal law. And so it will be in all of them. And so we can either never approve them out of concern for that language or approve them and understand that the professionals know how to set out an RFP and abide by those obligations.
So I'm just sounding a caution. That's all I want to do.
Points made.
Yeah.
It's a, thank, it's a good point and it's a good argument. It's just not one for fifteen minutes or twenty minutes, you know?
I get it. I just want to raise it because a- as we move forward with these, I want us to have our eyes open. I don't want us just rubber stamp professionals, because I'm not convinced that the professionals across this nation are really professional. I think a lot of them have an agenda. They're driving things in a certain direction and changing the language in a certain direction. And that affects the way we live our lives.
Yeah.
And, and I just want to raise that banner. And that's, that was what I did. And I said, all I want to ask about.
Point taken. Thank you. Okay, so council, anything further? Or can I get a motion? Or is there anybody on Zoom?
Suzanne is, there is eight people hanging on, but none of them have their hand raised.
Okay. And now, like I said, I'm down to two in the audience. Neither seem anxious to ask anything about this topic. So now may I get a motion?
I will move to approve the intergovernmental agreement with the Colorado Department of Transportation to obtain, obtain stimulus relief funds in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars as presented.
I'll second it.
Thank you, council. You may vote. Thank you, council. Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Sally. And thank you, Nina. And we are on to eleven reports. I have, go Hillary. Really exciting reports. So City of Woodland Parks, having winter day in the park and city tree lighting, December third at Memorial Park. And the scheduled events are at three thirty PM. It's when it starts. And they are going to have a petting zoo, candy cane lane, pictures with Santa, hot chocolate and candy. And then at five o'clock, it's going to be a sing along with Santa. And they're adding something new. It's the elf scramble. I don't know what that is, but I don't think it has to do with eggs. And then at five thirty, it's the tree lighting. So starts at three thirty. They've got great events. And then at five thirty, it will be the tree lighting in Memorial Park on December third. So we hope to see you guys there.
Where's the floats?
Isn't this, is this Friday?
This is Friday. Yeah, Saturday's the parade. Yeah.
Saturday, the fourth.
So we're not doing it after the parade this year.
I, you know what, I.
Yeah, because the tree.
I just work here as a volunteer.
We're not doing it after the parade this year.
This is the second year. Oh, sorry, Michael.
No, go ahead.
This is the second year in a row we haven't done the same. We've done it Friday and it's been Saturday. We did it the same way last year.
The parade?
So Saturday's the parade.
So Saturday is the parade.
And the hat competition, right?
Yes, and the crazy hat competition.
December fourth is this, yes.
Lighter side of Christmas.
Yes, this December fourth. And then the only other topic I had was, I know that council member Alfieri has been absent from several of the charter review meetings, which is what it is. And she's referred to Catherine to be, to give us the report. So Catherine, if, if I don't know that I necessarily need consensus or anything, because I'm not appointing or asking to appoint. But if Catherine, you would mind just taking on the duty of also being a liaison and then you can just furnish the reports.
Sure.
Okay.
That's fine. Thank you.
So, thank you. Okay, that's it. I'm done. Kelly, you're up.
I have nothing, Your Honor. There's this parade Saturday the fourth.
There's a parade on Saturday the fourth, the lighter side of Christmas parade, and it benefits. Wow. Just jumped right out of my brain.
Tell her senior coalition.
Tell her senior coalition. Thank you, Catherine. We're all, we're all gonna touch it.
Finish that up?
Yeah, she does.
Catherine, we're just gonna let you give all the.
No, I think it starts at six, I think is when the parade goes down Highway twenty four. It has in the past. So. See everyone there.
Just, just to set expectations, there's a burn ban in place.
Really?
No barrels?
Well, I, I don't know about the burn barrels. I'm thinking about fireworks.
We're, we're, we're real professional. We know lots.
We should probably have somebody here that can talk about it.
Knows what the heck they're talking about.
So I'll stop. Thank you. That's all I have. We need someone with children who participates in these events.
Okay, sorry, Catherine.
Oh, let's see. So I'll, I'll reiterate for Main Street, we've got shop small Saturday, November twenty seventh, which is the Saturday after Thanksgiving. They'll be at Joni's parking lot at nine thirty AM, handing out the free bags with the coupons. And then for charter review, we have the city attorney working on the language for the conflict of interest, the gender, neutral language, the misconduct and the election ordinances for review for the next meeting, November twenty ninth. And we're still discussing the utility franchise agreement section. That's all I've got.
There's a parade.
I have nothing, not even a parade, Your Honor.
Very good. Robert?
You may, I'm speechless, Rusty. That's awesome. So PPACG, we are still working to delicately tell Mr. Polis and his Rules Committee for Electric Vehicles that there's some huge flaws in it. Anyway, so for public comic, they expanded that area. This morning, I went up to Cripple Creek and their commissioner a meeting, they had presentation from Newmont Mines. And Newmont Mine presented their proposal and resolution to expand operations or extend operations, I'm sorry, for another six years. It's not messing with their footprint at all. They'll be infilling within the, the mine. They're, you know, they are very sensitive company in terms of, of, of being a good player in a community. So I'm just bringing that report that they were granted that extension to six years. So it's like twenty thirty, twenty thirty one, I'm sorry. I guess I should read my notes and then you can know. Or no, it's on this piece. Increased to twenty thirty one for one as, there's three aspects of it and I wrote it in two places. Oh, fiddlesticks. There's three aspects of their mining. One is expanding till twenty thirty one. Another is increasing six years till twenty thirty eight. And the last one is to twenty fifty, another eight years, and that's reclamation, closing it down and, and making it all look nice again. So I'm sorry, I have the brochure. Somebody would like to see it. Anyway, so that was from Teller County. And I think for me, the reason it's important in terms of ourselves is that regionally, we've got some, some networking that's going to be the coming to play next year, probably towards the middle of next year or something, as we start looking for getting partners for feasibility of a reliever route. So there's going to be a need to, to, and there has already been some expressed need, expressed interest with some other players to say, yeah, we like that idea. So. That is all I have. Mayor Proton.
Very good. Nina?
Um, nothing tonight and no further jokes. Sorry, Robert. She came prepared.
So, so what do you call a person who never gets angry? Say again. What do you call a person who never gets angry? A no man.
It goes from bad to worse.
What word in the English language is almost always spelled wrong? Wrong. Late doesn't help the funny. So first of all, I just want to say one more thank you to Sally Riley for a, a great, beautiful swan song with the comp plan.
Yeah.
And the zoning code update, that great, that's.
Thank you.
Yes, I don't know who else could do that. Thank you. So great job. She's worked really, really hard. She was looking forward to it. Thank you to the council too for expressing concerns that you had throughout the process and going and working with us. We, we really appreciate that open communication. That was, that was done very well. And then, thank you. So, thank you Sally and the rest of the countless folks who were involved in that. We also had a town hall last night for the police chief, asking folks what they like to see a new police chief. Not as well as attended as I had hoped, but we still had it. There was probably, I don't know, ten, eleven people on the call. Some of them were staff, so it wasn't well attended. But we did get some comments. And we had it and people had the opportunity. And so there, there was a few good takeaway items from that that we'll introduce into the process. And thank you all for sharing your thoughts. I know you've done that as well with recruiter. So, and we want to make sure we do it right. And this is all part of it. And I think that's all I got.
Michael, may I add one thing?
Yes, please.
I just wanted everyone to put on your calendar for December ninth. Caris Bible College and Andrew Womack Ministries is going to be presenting their vision plan for the campus and their new holdings. And that is the second Thursday of the month. It will be a joint work session with Planning Commission. And of course, public is invited, but they're Caris Bible College is gearing up to move forward with an amendment to their PUD for student housing, which is yay yay. Really happy about that. And so if you can add that to your calendar and then I just would, it's seven PM.
The ninth.
Then the ninth here. Yes, second Tuesday. And we'll be sending out that vision plan before that, at least a week before. So you'll get be able to review it before their presentation happens that Thursday.
Is there no planning commission?
We have one small legislative case that will take just, and it's just legislative. It's not QJ. It's actually removing the in-home family daycare codes that we have because the legislature passed new laws and they trump our codes. So we need to amend that.
So it's at seven, the meeting?
Seven PM with Caris. And of course, we'll get the word out to the community as well. So they'll be able to see the presentation on the vision plan. And then just lastly, thank you so much, council, for your support through the comprehensive plan. And we're working diligently to have a draft of the unified zoning code and subdivision regulations. So that should be completed at the end of this year. And then my successor will need to carry.
And then my successor will need to carry that forward.
Sally, how many more meetings do you have?
How many meetings of?
City council meetings, do you have?
One. I have one more meeting.
After, have you calculated how many you've had?
Over the almost thirty-seven years.
That's a lot of meetings.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Very good.
Thirty-seven, ten, twenty-six.
It's probably twenty-five because we take off.
Oh, that's true.
We always have to debate.
Yeah, but then we have special sessions too.
But guess what, guys? This meeting is adjourned.